Vice Mayor, I think you, uh, there we go.
You saying I'm making too much noise? Madam Mayor?
You were, I was just trying to figure out where I was hearing those wind chimes and I figured it must be here.
No, it's not here.
Oh.
This is where I have fun saying, "What wind chimes, Madam Mayor?"
Alright, well, seeing as it is six o'clock, I will go ahead and ask that we begin with our special meeting of, uh, our town hall. Second town hall meeting for Katari, uh, it's October 1st. Thank you all for joining us again. Uh, this is going to be much like the same format that we had, uh, at our, uh, July meeting. Even though the agenda only lists public comment at the beginning, I want to reassure everybody, we're gonna have public comment reopen, um, after the presentation and again, uh, you know, closing remarks, things like that. Our goal is to make sure that we are able to hear from every citizen who wishes to speak, um, for their three minutes. Uh, and then we have time. Our plan is to, um, make sure everybody's at least been heard from who wants to speak and then, uh, we would then provide second and third opportunities for folks, so don't feel completely constrained by the three minutes. We will be giving additional time. Just keeping track of making sure everybody's at least gotten a chance to be heard once. So with that, I mean, I think I really want to appreciate, um, how well everybody handled themselves back in July. I think we did, we can be raising some sensitive issues and so really appreciated everybody's respectful tone, um, and willingness to listen to everyone, so thank you very much and I hope we can do the same thing tonight. So with that, uh, I will turn it over to our city manager, Damian Obed. Oh no, sorry, I'm gonna open it up first for our public comments. Um, so, uh, we'll begin by, I'll ask our city clerk to check in with any of the attendees, see if they're interested in having public comments upfront and again, like I said, it'll be an opportunity after the presentation as well.
And, uh, Mayor, I'm sorry, did, did we do roll call? Did I miss that?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm skipping right over things, so yes, if we could begin with a roll call, thank you. Councilmember Deliso.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Here.
Mayor Stillman. Here, thank you for that reminder. It's so, just getting used to the virtual thing and I just raced over to Sebastopol to visit with my parents and make sure they're doing okay, so anyway. Yes, so now let's, uh, prep for public comments, thank you Lauren. Thank you, Mayor Stillman. Just as a reminder to our attendees tonight, to make a public comment, use your raise hand icon on your smart device or desktop computer, or dial star nine if you're just using your telephone. Listen carefully for the mayor or myself to address you by name or phone number and for the audible notification that you've been unmuted. Uh, once you begin your public comment, your three minutes will begin. Carol, go ahead.
My name is Carol Williams, um, and I'm, my comment has to do with, uh, lack of notice of this meeting. I'm, I was disappointed that there wasn't a lot of advance notice of the meeting. Those of us who were expecting the meeting because it, we were told at the first meeting there would be another meeting in October. But we were still taken by surprise by the date and I don't think the general public got any notice at all until the meeting notice was posted on the bulletin board in front of the fire station on Monday, basically three days before the meeting. So, um, you know, I'm concerned about that and you and the city staff, uh, and council members could have reached out on your website. You could have put a notice in last week's community voice. You could have contacted, uh, members of CORE, uh, who were anticipating that there would be a meeting and asked us to spread the word. And I hope that there are more than just a handful of people attending the meeting tonight, but it's very likely that people might have wanted to participate, uh, didn't even know about it.
Okay, Marjorie Crump Sheary, please go ahead.
Thank you, I'm Marjorie Crump Sheary, I live on Madder East Circle. Um, I've lived in Katari for ten years, having moved here from Sebastopol and having lived there for forty years. I want to piggyback on, uh, Carol Williams' comments. One of the, I'm also a member of CORE. And one of the major pushes, uh, uh, from CORE to our city council and our police chief, um, is the involvement of the community in our city government. And the lack of, I'm, I'm looking for words. The lack of time given to advertising this meeting, um, makes me wonder who you wanted to be here? Is it just CORE or are you really wanting the public, the greater public of our community in Katari to participate in town halls? And if that's the case, um, it is vitally important that meetings be not only published on certain social media, put up, uh, on the board at the fire hall, but it be done so that people have time to accommodate if they want to attend. I ask two questions. One, I don't know what the goal of this meeting is. I suspect in the agenda area of next steps, perhaps, and hopefully together, we will be talking about what those are. The other concern, the other point that I want to make is because of the time issue, CORE has reached out on its own to the community. We don't know who's here, we don't know how many people are here, but it is very, very important to us that this community be included. Thank you.
Adrian Lobby, go ahead. Do we? Do we know who may have Star Wars going on in the background? Sorry. Adrian, if you can hear me, go ahead.
Thank you, I finally got the unmute button. If you could give me just a second to pull up my result, my, uh, remarks. My name is Adrian Lobby and I live at Kingston Way in the Red Hill, uh, apartment complex. I'm a member of CORE. I heard you at the last special council meeting, um, talking about setting up an ad hoc working group on these issues. And in the last council meeting, there was a lot of back and forth about when will you do it? Should it be part of this meeting? Could it be not? So I'm thinking we need to think about this at the beginning of the meeting. On July 22nd, each of you said that you were interested in learning more about the five areas that CORE brought to you. Those areas were a faster exchange of, uh, tabulation of demographic information on police encounters, ongoing citizen oversight of the police, a formal poll of community racism and police encounters, alternative 911 response with trained medical and social work crisis team members who would respond without the police to nonviolent calls, and finally, an ad hoc working group to try to implement some of these proposals. Now, we all know that it takes more than three minutes to present the complexities of ideas like these. And with one exception, the poll of the residents, we have not had requests from any of you for briefings, or we have not been given a venue where we can delve into these proposals. Even tonight, we're again limited to three minutes. We're college and high school teachers, researchers, academics, people with experience living in black and brown bodies. Some of us have followed these issues in detail for seven years, since the death of Andy Lopez. We're responsible people. We have worked hard to reassure you and manager Obed that we do not come with these, with dogmatic positions. We have strong opinions, we're looking for opportunities to test and improve our thoughts with those of other residents and members of this staff and council. We want to work with you to figure out how these broad stroke proposals can or cannot work in our small city. And we want to start this ad hoc community committee so we can start to move forward. We all want to think there's no problem in Katari. That when we say charming, we aren't talking about a predominantly white town that doesn't care about its black and brown residents. But time's a-wasting. We've had two months with no change. It takes only four seconds to kill someone. I for one do not want to understand our mistakes, mistakes in our system because of media and courtroom attention after one of my neighbors has died. Please put the creation of an ad hoc committee on the next agenda for the city council and all of you sign up to serve on it. Thank you very much.
Mel Browning, go ahead.
Can you hear me? Yeah, go ahead, okay. Yeah, I'm just, I really wanted to express my disappointment with, um, how little notice was given for this meeting. You know, we, I know that a lot of community members have asked to have this meeting and to have it sooner rather than later. And there's a difference between having it quickly but not giving any advance notice, um, and then, and not. So I just, I'm, I'm wondering what type of participation you could hope for with such little notice. For me, it starts to kind of ring hollow that you actually want to really address these issues if we're not really engaging our community, um, by making sure that they are aware of meetings like this happening in their community. You know, there's, there's a difference between doing things in name only and actually being committed to involving the community in the process to address concerns about policing. So I guess one of my major concerns is how things are happening, um, in these conversations. And I think that, that, that speaks to concerns around the possibilities of like moving forward unless we can actually engage the community and, and actually do these steps together versus having a meeting, not giving very much notice and then, you know, people don't show up and then I guess, okay, people don't have a concern, so then we don't really have to do much about it. Like that's just really, it's, it's upsetting and I really just wanted to express my concern about that. Um, and I'm really, really hoping to see something change in terms of how these things are set up. So that really the voices of community members can be involved, not only in telling you in three minutes what their concerns are, but engaging with the council and with the city in actually coming up with good solutions. So, um, that's my comment for today, thank you.
Caitlin, go ahead. I think she's muted.
There we go, I am unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Can you hear me? Alright, uh, the beginning of, of my talk was amazing, you'll have to believe me. No, I'll start again. Um, I, my name is Caitlin, I live on Centera Way in Katari. And today I want to talk broadly about bias in policing in the United States, but also bring it home to Katari. And I know that this is a difficult topic to speak on, it hits a lot of emotion, especially for police officers and people who care about police officers, and I do empathize with that. But I still want to quickly run through some very important data points about bias in policing in the United States. Because I think it's important that we continue to revisit these facts and look past our, our impulse to take these personally or look at them with apathy and think that that's a problem that's happening somewhere else. Since there's not enough time in three minutes for me to, you know, really thoroughly cite all of the studies I'm talking about, I just want to let you know that you can contact me if you'd like links to any of my sources, I do have them. So just a few facts to understand that this is really a problem that's happening on all levels. There was a study that found that police officers speak differently to black and white citizens. With black people, they're more likely to use the word "bro", for example, and, um, less likely to offer reassurances during a traffic stop. In Oakland, it was found that black men were searched nearly four times as much as white men and Latino men were searched around two to three times as much as white men, despite everyone having similar levels of illegal substances. And a national study of a hundred million stops nationwide found similar results. There was also a widely cited study by social scientist Joshua Correll that showed, um, in a video game simulation that everyone from regular individuals to people on the police force are more likely to shoot unarmed black people than unarmed white people. And also faster to shoot armed black people than they are to shoot armed white people. And so I know we've all heard facts like this, but despite all of this evidence, I know we still want to say, you know, not here, not us, not our small town, like we're too progressive here, I know the officers, they're kind people. And you know, that can all be true, but we still have to look at the facts and understand that it's our responsibility to look for these patterns here. The, the fact is that it's, this is a yes here, yes now situation. It doesn't make us bad people to acknowledge our own role in racism, um, to acknowledge our city's role in racism. It means that we're growing as people, as a city, and that we're making life safer for all of our black and brown, black and brown citizens. So please, let's take action, put the creation of an ad hoc committee on the next agenda and let's keep working together on these issues. Thank you.
Jenny Blaker.
Hello, can you hear me? Yes. This is Jenny Blaker, Arthur Street, Katari. I haven't been centrally involved with CORE, but I thank those who have for their work. I agree about the lack of public noticing. I did get an email, um, about this meeting, but that's because I'm signed up to get the agendas for all the city council meetings and a lot of people who are not might well want to take part in this meeting but not be on those lists. So I agree that anything that can be done to reach out to the community through social media, sometimes notices seem to go out on next door, on the bulletin board by the fire station, in the newspaper and so on, where people actually can get to see it and hear about it, with at least a week's notice, I would say, to make sure that people who'd like to be here can be here, would be really helpful. It's also, would be very nice to be able to see a list of participants so that we know how many people are participating in these meetings. I was very grateful initially that the city staff and council and police seemed to be very open and responsive and willing to work with CORE as they're suggesting. But these actions about not making the meeting very visible, um, really don't seem to support that beginning promise. I thought it was very interesting that CORE did this brief, um, survey of, I think it was something like seventy people in Katari that definitely revealed racism from police in Katari. And, um, I agree with everything that's just been said about, you know, a lot of us wouldn't think that there's racism in Katari because it seems to be such a great place, but it's everywhere. It's in all, it's in all white people, I think, at some level. And I think we need to acknowledge it and learn about what's going on. And I really supported the idea of having a citywide survey that would go to everyone in the city and to collect as many responses as possible. I'd really like to thank CORE for what they're doing and encourage them to, um, and encourage you to work with them. Also, it would have been helpful to have an agenda for today so we could see what issues were coming up. But again, it seems as if the members of CORE who were offering to help were, that their offers weren't, weren't taken up. So I really urge you to work on this issue and, um, take on board some of the expertise for the individuals in CORE who've been working so hard to bring this forward in a very respectful and cooperative manner. Thank you.
Merritt Weissman, please go ahead.
Hi, um, I want to start by thanking you for your service, time and consideration of this crucial discussion. I'm Merritt Weissman, a resident of Katari since April and a member of CORE. I have over twenty years of professional community I have over 20 years of professional community and civic engagement experience, including in higher education and in community-based work. The proposed ad hoc group and a civilian oversight board is good community engagement. For example, one key component of effective civilian review boards is that the majority of board members are nominated by civic organizations. This issue goes well beyond policing. Good civic engagement has value for communities and can help Katari become a more cohesive and caring city. Good civic engagement improves governance by increasing democratic legitimacy for institutions because of close links with residents, improving reputations for public bodies, increasing opportunities for active citizenship, and providing greater accountability of public bodies because of more effective information dissemination and better dialogue. Good civic engagement leads to greater social cohesion. It brings diverse and sometimes hostile communities together. It brings harder-to-reach groups into discussions. It builds relationships within and between different communities and social groups. It strengthens and creates new networks that enable different interests to work together as a result of building more positive relationships based on a better knowledge of each other. And it also increases equality of access to policy decision-making processes. Good civic engagement reduces conflict between different parties and increases trust through better communications. It enables people to share in the responsibility for improving their own quality of life, life. This leads to improved quality of services, projects, and programs, including ensuring public service investment is based more on people's expressed needs, reducing management and maintenance costs by reducing vandalism and misuse as a result of engendering a sense of ownership. Katari can greatly benefit from good civic engagement in, in the forms of the ad hoc working group and civilian oversight board. But in order to gain all these benefits, the ad hoc group and civilian oversight must be authentic and empowered. This is why we recommend that the majority of civilian oversight board members be nominated by civic organizations. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
So my name is Daniela, Daniela. Um, me llamo Daniela en español. I am a high school Spanish teacher. I'm also a mom to two teenage Latino boys, and I'm a resident of Katari for about 10 years. I've lived in Cinema County on and off for about 30 years, and I live in the Frog Song Cohousing Community. And, you know, I just want to echo what um so many others have said. I'm also a member of COR. Um, and, you know, if the city council really wants to see more community engagement than, um, you know, letting us know when there's a meeting, I think people really, we are all, you know, busy professionals. I think we do need, um, you know, a week or two weeks' notice so that um we can all show up and so that more community members do show up. Um, and, yeah, so I think all of us would have liked to have a bit more notice. Um, I want to talk just a little bit about um mental health. Um, Measure O, as you know, is um a measure that's coming up on our ballot, and that would give more mental health funding for our community. Um, there is a program that um has been in the spotlight recently called Kahoots. I've mentioned it before um here and at different city council meetings. Um, Kahoots is a model, it's a program that started in Eugene, Oregon about 31 years ago, and um it's basically two-person teams consisting of a medic and a crisis worker with substantial training in mental health. Um, they would then be called, rather than the police, to um, you know, to different mental health crises. And, um, you know, this is something that, um, I know the police chief uh is interested in, but the police chief here in Katari and the police chief in Santa Rosa, as well as the sheriff. I know that the police really like the MST program that we have here, but it really isn't quite where the Kahoots model is. Kahoots um staff, they're not law enforcement, and they are first responders, so 911 actually would call Kahoots directly instead of the police. So they can come, the mental health workers who are trained um in de-escalation, they would come and be the first responders when there is a mental health issue. And I just want to share very quickly a study that was published in the American Journal of Preventative Medicine, and it actually, this is a study from November 2016. It estimated that between 20 and 50% of fatal encounters with law enforcement involved an individual with a mental illness. So the Kahoots model really demonstrates that these fatal encounters are not inevitable. And I know I've given this um data before, but out of um 24,000 Kahoots calls, police backup was actually only requested 150 times. So this is a program that really works, and I really hope that um we could get more funding for MST, which is our program in Cinema County, and so that we can change it and it could become more like a Kahoots model. And thank you. I know it's three seconds over, but thank you so much.
Dean Kay, go ahead.
Hi, uh, my name is Dean Kendrick, and thank you esteemed council members and honorable mayor and police chief, assistant uh, our, our city manager. Uh, I am a resident of Katari Runner Park, so to speak, and have had uh some experience in municipalities and media, and also uh been on both uh the sides of, of, of providing services as well as having received services. And uh, I've heard a lot of discourse tonight about the public uh noticing of meetings, and I have a 33-year experience with the city municipality televising their municipal meetings and so on, familiar with the Brown Act and a lot of other things. And I know that the city and the city attorney can work through that. So thank you. And the other matter is I want to compliment the police chief and his staff for having the patience uh during this very uh difficult time. And I want to also express that not only Black Lives Matter, but Blue Lives Matter, and I appreciate all of the services of the city of Katari, and I see the growth that's happening, and I do hope that uh there's some, you know, uh, good uh energy put into the town, and uh thank you for allowing me the time.
Mayor Skulman, that is it for our public comment. Okay, thank you everybody for your comments. Um, so we'll move to the um presentation that uh has been prepared for tonight, and for that I will turn it over to our city manager, Damian Orkin.
You mayor members of the council, so just give us a minute here, I'll load the presentation up. So, um, I just got to get control here shortly. While we're waiting for the control to come over, um, it's uh, it's been a, it's been a busy, uh, it's been a busy period of time. So, you know, in addition to, to COVID and the budget and the economic development stuff, uh, the work that the, that the uh council has been working on, also, we had a few fire responses in the last couple of months, um, uh, starting a one and a half million dollar paging project, Pathway, Rayantra, Volition, finishing up implementation of various new IT projects that the chief can certainly speak about. It's uh, it's been kind of a very, um, very busy time, so. You, everybody, for um, sharing what, as we kind of all worked through the stuff together. And um, I just wanted to just lead off by uh just a quick recap of where we last left this in um July 22nd. So, as you all know, the city provided a summary of police statistics and operations and how the police department works in the city. And um, you know, my, my summary of the meeting is um, is, you know, can we implement RIPA as the Racial Identity and Profiling Act early? Can the city conduct a statistically valid survey of all the residents regarding racism and bias in Katari? And um, looking into one of the best practices for civilian oversight of police and um a desire for a Kahoots-type model for um mental health response. And so tonight, we were just going to talk about uh what's really what's happened since July 22nd. We've had, um, as we mentioned back in July 22nd, Lexipol is our policy manual, and we've had, it's literally constantly changing. And um, so we have uh new policies that have been implemented since July 22nd, um additional training that we'll talk about, um, some updates on the MST program that we'll talk about. Um, a little more information about where we are with uh RIPA, um, the request for an early implementation on RIPA, and uh update on where we are with the community survey, um, some discussion of oversight models, and then some recommendations, and then next So um, with that, I'll introduce um Michael Parrish, the chief of police, and you will take it from here.
Um, so before you start, am I uh loud and clear?
You are.
All right, good. Uh, city manager, I'm gonna have you, um, since you've got control of the slide already, I'll just have you come to the slide for me.
Sounds good.
All right. Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to our town hall meeting. As the city manager said, yes, um, we're in busy times. Uh, we had Katari police officers doing evacuation um Monday night up on uh Highway 12 at Cubs. And there is a lot of IT things going on here as well with uh upgrades in our police record systems and our computer-aided dispatch and our phones and our payroll. Um, we had a lot of things on our council agenda at our last council meeting, so we're in very um busy times, and I hope everybody's safe out there. Um, and so, thank you for attending. Um, so, I spoke last time about some recent um state legislation. So, our legislature um has implemented Senate Bill 230 requirement, and that's new guidelines on use of force, um, including de-escalation techniques, obligation to report potential excessive force, obligation to intercede, uh, new training standards, upgraded training standards, um, factors for evaluating, reviewing all use of force. Um, and our use of force policy has to be available to the public. The full, um, our full policy manual is on our website. When you look at use of force, that would be section 300 when you um look at our website, and it's under the uh police tab on the city of Katari website. Also, there's an assembly bill, uh, 392 in California, which is new, and it creates Penal Code 835 subsection A, uh, which is law creating new standards for use of deadly force. So there's a lot of big changes that have happened uh in California that are far advanced to other um states in the United States. So we can give you the next slide, Damian, please. So as I spoke uh last time, you'll remember that um we use Lexipol as our policy manual. Uh, this is used throughout California and other states, not only for law enforcement but for fire as well and even corrections. Um, and our Lexipol policy manual would be very expensive for the city, however, it's provided um by the Redwood Empire Municipal Insurance Fund, uh, which is a joint powers authority that um about 15 cities um belong to. So it's basically an insurance pool that provides this manual. Um, so, this manual's always evolving, it's continually updated by experts, field to be compliant with all new state and federal laws, as well as any relevant case law and best practices that develop. And as you know, case law is, changes all the time. Um, so this is a highly active field of law, uh, keeps attorneys busy, um, it's, we use best practices, um, uh, use CORE policies as written, and so we do not, you know, we avoid making changes to the Lexipol manual, uh, because it is um written, um, as I said, uh, to coincide with current state, federal law, and best practices. So, since we spoke at the last town hall meeting, we have republished uh the Lexipol manual. So when you look at our website, you will see our brand-new policy manual, including use of force, and you will also notice that um the June policy is on the website as well. And so when you, when you look at um the website, you're gonna see a June policy, you're gonna see a September policy. I left the June policy up there so that when you look at use of force policies or other policies, you can compare, contrast that um for yourself, um, so you can have a better understanding of what, what's, what's changed and what's been added since we last um spoke. Um, so we can go to the next slide, please, Damian. So, here's a lot of the changes, and this is specifically, the, the manual has 10 chapters and it's 700 pages. Um, so it's extensive, there's a lot here. So what I'm gonna speak uh to is use of force, that policy, again, that's section 300. If you see something in bold, that's gonna be new. Um, but even the rest that's not in bold has been changed. So what I'm gonna talk about um here on this slide is changes in use of force and then also additions to use of force, and again, the bold is addition. Um, so, on the first bullet point, the use of force, purpose and scope, basically the change is, it, it calls out that all use of force needs to be um documented and reviewed. When I say documented and reviewed, I mean, you know, a police report is generated and in a review, what happens with the review is um, the sergeants are noticed that force was used, and the sergeant then review the police report, and they also review the body camera. There's a form associated with that that they fill out, um, and they give their, their opinion of whether or not use of force was appropriately used, and then that goes to the lieutenant for further review. Um, ultimately, um, the lieutenant can um agree or disagree that um the use of force was appropriate. If there's a disagreement, the lieutenant will come to me and we'll, we will review that for a potential uh administrative review, also known as a internal affairs investigative investigation, if we deem that appropriate. Um, and use of force could, could be um even not an arrest. So use, use of force could be um somebody in mental health crisis, and maybe they're combative and we put them in a wrap, and a wrap is a restraint device so that people won't harm themselves or others or um try to kick out windows. And so even though um this person hasn't committed a crime, we're just trying to get them help, um, by putting in, by putting that person in the wrap, we deem that as use of force, and that would be subject to review to make sure we're following uh policy. Um, and then moving into definitions, the next bullet point, I'll, I'll, I'll read these, it's use of force definition, um, talks about feasible, reasonable, reasonably capable of being done or carried out under the circumstances to successfully achieve the arrest or lawful objective without increasing risk to the officer or another person. And these are available, these, I'm reading you uh what was provided on the um, the webpage for tonight's meeting, so you can uh look along at that as well. Um, the, there's a definition of serious bodily injury, which includes impairment of physical condition, including but not limited to the following loss of consciousness, compassion, bone fracture, protracted loss or impairment of function of any bodily member or organ, a, a wound requiring extensive suturing and serious disfigurement. That falls under Penal Code 835A, which is one of those, uh, which is the assembly bill that I just spoke of. Uh, duty that, um, oh, duty to intercede, there's some changes on that. Um, a big change is, it, the policy manual uses see, used to say that A big change is, the policy manual used to see, used to say that if an officer observes another officer using excessive force or using more force than necessary to affect a legal arrest, that they have a duty to intercede with that officer. So there's some verbiage changes on that, says when they observe another law enforcement officer or any employee using force that which is clearly beyond that which is necessary as determined by an objectively reasonable officer, under the circumstances shall, when in position to do so, intercede and prevent the use of unreasonable force. So, you'll see the difference between officer and law enforcement officer. I believe that Lexipol changed that because, for example, a deputy sheriff is not an officer technically, they're a deputy sheriff, different terminology. So I believe this is changed so that it covers that any sworn officer witnessed using excessive force, there's a duty to intervene and intercede on that excessive use of force. This is new, so this is added, and this is from, again, the legislature and the Senate bill I spoke of. So in bold, what's new is fair and unbiased use of force. So I will read that verbatim. Officers are expected to carry out their duties, including the use of force, in a manner that is fair and unbiased. Duty to, duty to report excessive force. So there's always been that duty, but they've, they've combined these two words, duty and excessive force. So that's a big change. And so, again, I'll read that verbatim. Any officer who observes a law enforcement officer or an employee use force that potentially exceeds what the officer believes to necessary affect the arrest shall promptly report these observations to a supervisor as soon as feasible. Then there is just some use of force, so this is not new, but just verbiage changes. Officers, they only use a level of force that reasonably believe is proportional to the seriousness for what's a suspected offense or the, or reasonable perceived level of actual threatened resistance. But I know that's, that's a lot of big words and, but what that basically means in a nutshell is, if you're gonna use excessive force, it needs to be for a serious matter. Then, all new, what's new in bold here is added to Lexipol, alternative tactics and de-escalation, again, that's per the changes of the Senate bill. So things that we gotta consider for alternative tactics and de-escalation are summoning additional resources that are able to respond in a reasonably timely manner. So in other words, before you act, maybe you should get some more help. The officer should summon more officers so they could better react to the situation at hand. Formulating a plan with responding officers before entering an unstable situation that does not reasonably appear to require immediate intervention. So what this means is, sometimes we need to slow things down and think about this. And so, deadly force application, again, not new, but just some, some verbiage changes on that. Last time I talked about shooting or at or from moving vehicles, so this is generally discouraged by Lexipol. In order for an officer to do that, shoot at a moving vehicle or from a moving vehicle, this vehicle or this person needs to pose an immediate threat to public safety for us to do that. So at the last town hall meeting, I was asked about displaying of firearms and, and the answer was that it was not specifically called out in Lexipol. So it did not say displaying of firearms is a use of force. We generally, we knew that, that if you pointed a firearm at somebody, that was a use of force. However, it was not called out in Lexipol policy, but it is now, including the displaying of firearms. So even if we don't point a firearm at someone, if an officer approaches a car or a person in a park or whatever and they perceive danger, even if they don't point their firearm at the subject they're dealing with, even if they're just at the low ready, so in other words, gun out of the holster, down to their side at the low ready, that is, that is deemed use of force and that would be subject to review. There are some changes in, in medical considerations, but they're not anything that's that great, it's just a change in verbiage. There is some changes in training per the Senate bill, which I'm gonna talk to next, because we've, we have a lot of training changes because of the Senate bill and it's called out again in Lexipol. Then, the use of force complaint, generally that just calls out that when we receive a complaint, the processing and investigation of civilian complaints involving use of force incident should be handled in accordance with personnel compliance policy. So, and we do have that policy for review. So can we go to the next slide, Damian? So, I spoke about California training in the past, and I'm telling you that California, that our, our standards are higher than any state in the nation, including the, the police academy, which is ever evolving. We're fortunate to have the police academy in our own county where we send our people with very good academy and people, officers from all over the region attend this academy, which is in Windsor. And again, we have the highest police training standards in the nation. Next slide. So I wanna talk about some training. So one, so with crisis intervention training, my goal is to get every Catati officer and dispatcher, it's called CIT training, the crisis intervention training, my goal is to get all officers CIT trained. We're close with officers, we've got some dispatchers to go. But like, we, we just had a retirement recently and when that position's backfilled, for example, that new dispatcher hasn't been at this training yet. That's a little tough right now with COVID because this is a, this is a hands-on role playing serious class, it's thirty-two hours. It's hosted here in Sonoma County with Sheriff's Office and Sonoma County Mental Health. And, and I'm gonna get all personnel through that. Prior to the, the last town hall meeting, all command supervisory staff, so that's, that's me, my lieutenant, the sergeants and corporals, we all attended the force science institute training so that we could better train our staff how to deal with force and, and the science of it, because it is a science, it's very stressful out there and, you know, split-second decisions are made. And I just wanted to share with you that we all had that. Now, since we met last time, the three bullets, these trainings here, this is what we have done since our last meeting. So every, every officer, sergeant, corporal, since the last town hall meeting have received biased racial profiling training. And that's what the Senate bill intended. And so I wanna read you a description of that. So the goal of this training program is to provide law enforcement with the understanding of historical context and how they affect law enforcement's ability to serve. This training reviews history as it relates to racial bias and community perception, reviews potential ways biases may affect decision making, reveals how bias and profiling impact the profession and influence, influences public perception, identifies various communities' perspectives and concerns, and reflects on diversity within law enforcement. Another, another training that, that we've added, and so we're lucky, again, I said that the, the police academy is in our county, so they have a, they have a use of force or no use of force simulator. And so this is a, this is a video simulator and it's hands-on video training simulation that allows users to experience split-second decision making of when force should be used or not used, and opportunities to identify themselves as police officers, and opportunities to de-escalate the situation. So with this force officer simulator, it's a video and it's interactive. And so when officers go into the room and they advance the, the video screen, they are introduced to some scenario, the tie stress, and they gotta start making those decisions. And it's interactive, so we're training our officers to make sure they identify themselves as police officers and that they go into de-escalation tactics. And if they do, the, the person running the simulator is gonna be more kind to them because they've de-escalated the situation. If they're not doing a good job, the, the scenario can change where forces you. So what we're trying to do is condition our officers to identify themselves, use de-escalation tactics and try to de-escalate the situation and not use force. So, this happens, this, this simulation is used in the police academy. And then, officers don't really use it unless we send them back per post standards for what we call perishable skills. So what I'm gonna do is commit that our officers use this training, or get trained twice a year instead of every few years. So I, I've committed to that, I have an MOU with the college to use the simulator whenever we want, we just have to schedule it ahead of time, and we'll be doing that. A lot of our officers, about half of them since we've met, have received de-escalation techniques per, per the Senate bill, and the other half will soon. So I'll have all the officers and sergeants and corporals through the de-escalation tactics by the end of October. And so with that training is, it updates participates, participants on the use of force changes from the Senate bill, emphasizing de-escalation techniques, implicit bias, cultural awareness, and respecting the dignity and worth of life. This course is also designed to enhance officer response to persons with developmental and intellectual disabilities, mental illness, and other substance abuse. Through group learning activities, participants practice effective communication techniques to increase voluntary compliance, diffuse tense, and diffuse tense situations. Students participate in discussions, demonstration, and role play during this. Next slide, please, Damian. So, the MSP, so the Sonoma County Mobile Support Team has come up in public comment, and I agree that this is a great program. We, we use it here at Catati PD. And unfortunately, right now, it's only available Monday through Friday, usually from about one thirty to eight thirty PM. Those, that time element seems to be the peak hours for people becoming and, or getting into a crisis, mental health crisis. And we do respond with MST workers, our, our officers do. They require that we go with them, and that's the mobile support team's decision. But we have a strong relationship with our police officers and the crisis intervention workers. It's working, and I would like to see the hours expanded and, well, also the days expanded. So recently, we know that the county added five point five million dollars over three years to expand MST, and I guess they're using, they're using PG&E settlement funds for this. What that exactly looks like, how much that expands us here in Catati, I'm not sure. But again, as previously mentioned in public comment, there, there is a ballot major O in November. If that passed, if that's approved, that would significantly fund MST and hopefully that would provide expansion for the mobile support team powers. And that's something that I want, and that's something that our police officers want, I think that's, that's something that everybody here at this meeting tonight would like to see this get expanded. Then, the RIPA update, so, again, RIPA requires officers to report information including perceived race, gender, sexual orientation, age, disability, and primary language. And so this is when officers stop cars and meet with drivers and their occupants, or it could, it could be somebody walking down the sidewalk, it could be anybody, but it's this contact data. So all Sonoma County police agencies were required to begin this data collection in twenty twenty-two. However, we're gonna, we're gonna be able to roll this out early. So, the, the City of Catati is a member of the Public Safety Consortium, and that's a JPA of most law enforcement agencies in the county, including the sheriff. And because we're, we have a shared computer aided dispatch system, we are going to, our goal is going to go live, our hope is to go live with RIPA collection, RIPA data collection in January of twenty-one. And I'm confident that's gonna happen. We have a hardware system called Hexagon, that's the company. So we're gonna do testing in December with the hope to hold this out in January of twenty-one. And so, that would put us one year early on with the data collection, which I'm sure was, I'm sure that's good news for everyone tonight. Then, that's, that's all I had tonight. Damian's gonna speak of the community survey. So Mayor, I don't know if you wanted to open this up for questions or comments for, for
Well, when we were getting ready, we had just talked about positive, you know, opening public comments after the entire presentation, but I'll defer to City Manager Obit. You might wanna stop here and just focus on the police side of things and then focus on the community side of things, which, what's your preference?
I think, you know, maybe we just get through the PowerPoint and then we can have a good discussion at that point.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Wonderful. Okay, so the community survey, this was another one of the topics that was discussed in July. And really, just working with community members to conduct a statistically valid community survey. And really, the points of that are to understand racial bias in our community, understand positive or negative experiences with the Catati Police Department or really the city in general, conducted bilingually so that we can target groups, residents, groups of residents that may not speak English or be fluent in English. And we're, we're trying to get all that together and get it done and results back before the end of the calendar year. So that's our, that's our goal. Okay, so oversight, so we, we spent quite a bit of time looking into different oversight models around the state and, and what they look like and if there's any commonality to them. And I will say that certainly the most common civilian oversight for cities is the city council, city manager model, that's That's roughly 96% of the cities in the state, plus or minus a couple, but that's basically the rough percentage. And then, in terms of best practices with respect to, to cities that had appointed or contract oversight models, so there's some oversight cities that have appointed citizen committees and others that have just a contracted consultant essentially that acts in that role. And there's, what it works out, there's out of the 482 cities, about 20 cities have some form of formal, kind of appointed or contract oversight. And that's, and there's no single best practice really in those, in that group of 20. The last 20 years or so, it seems like if you're to roughly group these types of oversight functions together, then the auditor monitor is the most common model among the newly, newly formed, newly as in the past 20-plus years. Others, typically older ones are investigation or review focused, and, and just the research, there's no cities that we could find under 36,000 population with any sort of active oversight body of, of appointed or contract types. So anyway, this is just a good look like graphically. So elected governing board, City Manager Oversight of Police is the bar on the left, and then the contracted or appointed group, or can just group together, just to keep the chart simpler, but they add up in total to about 20. So they're relatively rare in the, in the state. In terms of population groupings, so under 36,000, there's, there's one agency that, that, that we could find that had, like an advisory type body. This is, this is the City of Sausalito, about 7,000 population, but it's not active. That's why the one in the red bar. It exists on paper, but it doesn't function. And I don't know how long it's been since it last functioned, but it, it's definitely inactive now. Between 36,000 and 60,000, there's a couple in the state, one in Southern California, and one in the North Bay, City of Novato. And so I'll get to that in a second. And then there's a group of cities, about five, that, that have some type of appointed or contract oversight in the 60,000 to 90,000 population range. And then really the rest, like the other half of them, is for cities over 500,000. So getting back to the North Bay, there's no cities in Sonoma County that, that have oversight or certainly active oversight. Sonoma County does, Sonoma County Sheriff does have a form of oversight currently, and I think everyone knows I L era measures on the ballot for November, so that could be getting more robust after the elections if it's passed by the voters. And that applies to the sheriff. So the nearest city, as I mentioned earlier, is Novato. Population is 55,000, and it's typically advisory only with no investigative powers. Sausalito is advisory only. It's the only other city in the North Bay, and they're inactive. So into some of the, just some of the legal basics about oversight, I'll just start with, just saying that Catati is a general, what's called a general law city. And what that means is we're not a charter city, we don't have a charter. So we're bound by the general laws of the state of California. So a general law city does have the power to form a police oversight body under its police powers, provided it doesn't conflict with state law. So another sort of fundamental thing to understand is that a city council can't grant an oversight body any powers it doesn't possess itself already. And going again to the government code, the police department of a city is under the control of the Chief of Police, state law. So the city council cannot create an oversight, a police oversight body that exerts control over the police department, as such a body would conflict with, with state law. So control is basically, what this means in detail is that any actions related to discipline or requiring the implementation of policies, procedures, and practices is, is not permitted. There's also another relevant state law that, that bears on the subject, and that's the Police Officer Bill of Rights. So police records are confidential and can't be disclosed with only a couple exceptions. And so the three exceptions listed below is like a criminal grand jury, so if there's a criminal trial going on, the grand jury can request to get access to confidential, like police personnel files, the district attorney, again, and typically in a criminal proceeding, can get access, and the state attorney general can get access. There are some exemptions in, in the public records law, more recently as of 2019, otherwise known as SP 1421. It did carve out some, some types of records that are available under certain circumstances. And then, and then finally, there's a, what's called a PITCHES motion, and that's, just if anyone's not familiar with that, probably most people aren't, because it's kind of a, a cul-de-sac of law that most people probably don't play in. But basically what it is, is, is if there's a, if there's a case, let's say there's a, someone gets arrested, and, and they're trying to defend, you know, the plaintiff's attorney is defending the, the person, and, and they, they think that maybe the police officer that arrested the, arrested their client is dishonest or has some, you know, some issues in their personnel record that would, that would potentially exonerate their client, so they can file what's called a PITCHES motion with the court. And then the police, what happens is the police agency delivers the personnel records to the judge. The judge looks at it by him or herself in closed doors and determines if any, if there's anything in the personnel file that would, would apply to the case. And if there is, then that would, that could be disclosed with the case. If there's not, then the records are returned, and they're not viewed by either attorney or the public. So that's, it's really looking for what they call a Brady issue with a police officer. In other words, someone that's been, someone in their, in their career has been found to be dishonest for that type of thing, and, and that's in their personnel file. So the one thing with the oversight bodies statewide is they are primarily advisory only. Some of them do have investigatory functions, and, you know, how that, how that works, and how certainly, you know, it works in most cases is they have to, the oversight body has to hire a qualified staff person, so basically have a, like permanent staff to support. This is like, as you saw, half of these agents, half of these oversight bodies are in large agencies. So they do have a whole infrastructure, kind of administrative infrastructure to support this function. And so in those cases, they might hire staff. In other cases, they need to hire either a private investigator or an attorney that's bound by confidentiality agreement with the city. So it can either be that the investigator does an investigation, just reviews the, the internal affairs investigations after they're done, could potentially do them in parallel, or could even take the place of the, you know, the I function itself. But the investigation then would be, any, any sort of presentation of that information to an oversight body or in the general public does not contain confidential information. So the oversight bodies themselves don't have any access to confidential information. It's this contractor that they would hire that has this confidentiality agreement that would potentially have access. And so like I said, the body, the body itself has no access to this information. There's a couple weird outliers in the state, but that wouldn't apply here in Catati. And they're generally just because they've had, like, you know, Oakland's been under a, I don't know, like a two decade long federal consent decree, because I guess they like to be under a federal consent decree. They can't seem to get out of that. And, and so they have, they have all sorts of layers of oversight, and it's just kind of a mess. But they, they do have some, some kind of unique circumstances because of lawsuits, settlements, and other things that are going on. But that, again, I just, I just pointed out because there are some outliers that you see when you look around, but there's not many of them, and it wouldn't apply here anyway, so. What does it all mean? So the most common citizen oversight is the City Council, City Manager model. You know, basically 96% of the cities in the state are like this. There's about 4% that have some other type of oversight. In our research, we're not aware of any small cities under 36,000 population that have an active oversight body. The city council can't delegate any authority it doesn't already have. An oversight body could have advisory ability, but no access to confidential information. They could have investigatory abilities, but must have qualified staff or hire an investigator to do the work, and again, have no access to confidential information themselves, the body, the board members. And then they can only provide recommendations, because as you recall earlier, they can't enforce anything, they only can provide recommendation. So just, I'll just run through this real quick. I think we talked about a lot of this already, but I will just lead through these last slides, and then we can, we can pause and talk. But we are, we are committed, as the chief said, to implementing RIPA early, under state law. All, all agencies in Sonoma County, all public safety agencies are required to implement in 2022, but we're pushing with other consortium members that we're in a GPA with to implement early. So we're gonna be testing in 2020, December 2020, and if everything goes well, we'll be able to turn it live in 2021. And that's gonna be, I think that's gonna be a huge improvement in terms of understanding the data, because right now, we just simply don't have that kind of information. And, you know, it'll, not only for us, but for all the Sonoma County agencies that are in this, in the consortium, we're all gonna have the benefit of that data a year after January when we, when the first year closes. And I just will point out, because the way these, the way RIPA implements is they have what they call four waves, and Catati and all the other cities in Sonoma County are in the fourth wave. The first three waves are something like 20, 20, 20 police agencies, and so there were other like 400, well, it's a little more than that, the other like 400-ish police agencies, which is by far the vast majority of police agencies in the state, aren't gonna be implementing until 2022. So if we are able to move forward, like we're planning to in 2021, then we're gonna be definitely among the leaders implementing this statewide. We'll be hanging with like, you know, all the giant police agencies in the state of California. There'll be all the giant police agencies in Catati. And then conducting the community survey, you know, so we're moving forward on, or I should say, I've been, recently I met with some community, community members and got some information from them, and I'm, I'm working with a polling company to try to pull all that together. I mentioned the purpose of it. We are targeting survey results before the end of 2020. It will require a city commitment of approximately $25,000 to complete that survey. Commitment to supplemental training. So as the chief said, Catati does currently train above post requirements, and there's additional training in process now that he, that he described. I will say also, the descriptions he read off are also posted on the meeting portal for this meeting, if you're curious about rereading that. But those are the descriptions of those training courses, and the goal really is to, and the chief said this too, with any good training, really the, the, the best way to do it is to have more frequent, shorter trainings rather than super long, every five-year trainings. So that's definitely the goal that we've been talking about, is doing more regular touches so that it's just fresh with people, and they, and the training becomes habits, and that's what we wanna get to. And then additional training, you know, as we go through this, there could be additional training that comes up as just a good practice or something that we wanna undertake, especially as, you know, that, well, I'll move forward, it'll make more sense in a second. But we're also gonna make sure that we're continuing our best practices. Lexipol, as you know, continually pushes new updates. You saw, just the chief read through those updates, and that's just between July and now, that's two months' worth of update changes. And it literally is very fluid and constantly changing to keep up with the latest laws and case law and best practices. One of the things that we found looking into this is that the RIPA Board does actually publish recommendations annually as well. And the RIPA Board itself is made up of experts sort of across the spectrum, from nonprofit to faith-based groups to public safety groups. And not, not all of the, not all the recommendations would apply to an agency the size of Catati, but there, but there are some, certainly some, some things in there that are worth at least looking at each year and seeing if there's things that we can do in terms of practices to just be better at what we do. And then lastly, just, you know, I think committing to periodic independent reviews of just policy compliance and certain event types. And this will require annual budget appropriation to have an independent qualified reviewer, just to make sure, and this is really just about, you know, we all, we all hold ourselves accountable for just making sure that we're doing what we say we do. You know, we have our policy manual published on the website. As the chief said, the entire thing, the entire 700-page thing is there. So that's, that's what we hold ourselves to. And, and this is, I think, just a good practice, just to make sure that we're, you know, walking our talk and doing what we say we do. And certain event types, of course, would, you know, we would commit to independent review of that too, which is a bad practice. So the other kind of side of this coin is greater transparency, and we do have the Neighborhood Officer Program, and that's a biannual meeting with small neighborhood groups from the six areas of Catati. And this is a, really is a great opportunity to engage with, with the law enforcement officers and the neighborhoods, and really provide them meaningful feedback on, on whatever it is, just even if it's specific to the neighborhood or just maybe a more broad issue that, that we can take back and, and try to incorporate potentially in how we do things. And then also just engaging in regular informal community, community participation between the neighborhood officers and the, the neighborhoods that they, that they patrol. We're also, we're also looking at, just in the guise of, in the vein of transparency, really, we think it's important just to report out on, on what happens each year. And this is something the chief is committed to, and, and it's really just an annual process where, you know, we can summarize all the crime statistics, police statistics training, commendations, complaints, sort of how those are resolved, summarize the RIPA data once we have that. We'll talk about any RIPA practices that, that we may wanna implement, and then get community and council feedback. So in addition to the, the frequent touches in the Neighborhood Officer Program, also having an annual opportunity for the community to, to learn what's going on in the Police Department over the past year. So, so kind of in summary, just we're looking at, you know, implementing RIPA early, conducting the community survey, continuing supplemental training, we've already, we're already, that's already underway, but looking for new ones that could enhance areas that we feel we need additional training in, ensure continued best practices, greater transparency through public reporting, and community meetings, those neighborhood meetings. And then, and just also with regard to oversight, the City Manager, City Council Oversight is the most common model of civilian oversight in the state, and appears to be the best practice. And with that, I will pause, Mayor, and give you a chance to get And with that, I will pause, uh, mayor, and give you a chance, to give you and the council a chance to, um, ask questions of myself or, uh, Mike Parrish.
Apologies, my, uh, battery just told me that it was going to shut me out at the meeting, so I will, uh, first of all, check and see if there's any, um, comments from council, uh, and council member Landman, see if you've got your hand up high, please.
That looked like that was just in the nick of time, Madam Mayor. Uh, Peggy, I got a few questions to ask about the presentation, I'll say, reserve my comments for after public comment. Uh, first of all, I want to ask you, Mr. Abida, a little more about that inadvertent review recommendation you made along with a raft of other proposals. In my understanding this correctly, this would be using a qualified reviewer to report to council to improve, beautress, deepen our oversight, but in my understanding, it's not just responding to events that may happen, in other words, responding to something, but if this would actually be a proactive, regularly scheduled to some degree, monitoring of case reports, uh, surveys, RIPA data, to make sure that we're following our policies, because like you said, you could have great policies, but if your culture and your organization doesn't follow them, it doesn't do you any good. And I believe we have a good culture, I'd like to keep track of that and have a process in place to make sure it's happening. So could you confirm me that the idea that this is more proactive based, like just being responsive?
Yeah, well, that's, that's correct. So it would be just proactive, um, periodic testing of just policies, like with, you know, we say we do something a certain way, it's really just making sure that, um, that we do actually do it that way, and that we're, you know, that we're doing what we say we do.
Yeah, well, good, that's what I would hope for. I have no problem, and I would expect from time to time, as always happens in any citizen agency, there'll be something that pops up that we may wish to respond to and look into deeper too, and that's, that wouldn't be unusual, but I like the primary idea of this actually being something to deepen oversight, because that was a goal I had. Let me ask you about the survey, first of all, I'm, I'm very happy to see staff propose that, because I do see the need for a statistically valid survey here to give us some real data on what we're dealing with, because I, I applaud the efforts of the folks in the community in core for putting together and reaching out and trying to get some input, but I also know from years of experience that self-selecting surveys have a tendency often to distort. Uh, it, it was enough for me to be interested in spending the money and supporting spending the money to get something deeper, but I wanted to ask, would there be any problem with, as we begin to draw up questions for a survey? Because obviously that's the most important part, is what you ask, uh, not just asking it. Would there be any problem of working with the community, anybody interested, certainly core members, who I imagine would be interested to help put together that raft of questions for it comes to us for a final approval?
No, no, that was, um, that was the intent, to, uh, to work with them through that.
Okay, okay, good, good, that's helpful. I, I think there'd be some value in that, because, uh, that way it gives us a chance to match some of the data we previously received from what we might receive from this, which I think will be much larger and hopefully have a lot deeper outreach, particularly into our Latinx community. Uh, last thing I wanted to ask you, kind of two related questions. So I understand we could, if we want to create a se- a separate citizens oversight committee, but that would require its own separate staff time, uh, some amount of investigating actions and depending on the amount of demand. I'm curious what the cost could be, as I look at this, the amount of staff time and investigation, would this not potentially be a rather significant cost? That's, that's the first half of the question. And second, if we were to choose to do that and spend that additional staff time and money, because time is money, would that organism, that oversight be able to do anything that the existing elected, uh, civilian oversight, the city council, is able to do beyond what we're able to do?
Um, so in terms of cost, um, it would be a brown act body, so it does take a significant amount of staff time just to manage that, um, and certainly I would expect in the first, uh, several years, there'll be a significant amount of staff time just in educating everybody and bringing everyone up to speed, and then, and then there's sort of a steady-state amount of staff time into the future to manage that. And then, if there is any sort of investigatory ability, that could be in, you know, potentially, depending on the limits on that, that could be, uh, you know, every, anything from a moderate amount of money to a lot of amount of money, um, to hire a contractor to do all that. Um, and then on the, um, in terms of the scope, uh, any sort of oversight body, uh, would have no, um, they couldn't do anything that the council can't already do. So in other words, the council could do all this already, um, it would.
Okay, that, that's what I took from your presentation, I just wanted to clarify and make sure I was receiving that correctly. Thank you, thank you for your answers, thank you for the time, Madam Mayor.
Absolutely, and, um, council member Harvey, you can go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, um, uh, thank you, council member Landman, you hit some of my questions, but, um, so on this survey, um, I think you have been working with some of the community members, is that not true?
That's true, yeah, yeah.
That, that's why, that's my understanding. Um, and, uh, surveys sometimes tend to, um, not be answered or have difficulty in getting people to answer, so, uh, my understanding is, what we would desire is that something that really gets to the issues, we will have to probably go pretty deep to get a statistically sound number of people, correct? Because you randomly pick people, but we want, you know, kind of a pretty specific subset of that, and so in order to get that, it would seem that you're going to have to peel that onion back a little bit more, is that not correct?
Yeah, I mean, as you guys know, Cattati is primarily, um, Caucasian, so, uh, they, you know, they have to get a certain, uh, percentage of, um, of non-Caucasian respondents, and so that, you know, that could take a while, and, and that's part of, that's part of the reason, um, it's part of the reason for the cost, is because that could drag on for several weeks, um, to try to get the amount of responses they need to get to a statistically valid sample size.
Right, because it would be important for us to have a, um, statistically sound survey, it, it doesn't really help us as a community to have just a few respondents, there might be bigger underlying issues, but if you don't have enough statistical information, um, you, you can't really count on that, is that not correct?
Yeah, I mean, if you do a self-selecting survey, I mean, you can get, you can get a, uh, potentially a flavor of some subset, you know, groups attitudes on things, but, um, you know, I think generally from a policymaking perspective, you want something that's just more statistically sound.
Okay, and then, uh, the, uh, question around the oversight and it being a, a brown act, so it definitely would have to be a brown act, uh, committee, correct? Or if that, yeah, because I, I think that a lot, a lot of times, people don't really understand, um, the significance of that, and I think generally, um, I think a lot of the folks that have shown a lot of interest in their meeting and their talking and their going through all these things, that kind of stuff isn't allowed. Um, and I think people don't necessarily have a, a good understanding of that, so, um, it might be beneficial to kind of put out some of what that may mean, because it's one of those things where, well, you might be careful what you ask for, because you might think it might be something where you can freely talk to one another and all that, and one of the aspects of a committee that's held under the brown act is we have to have this meeting here in front of you, we have to have the public be available, and we cannot talk to one another. So, um, it, it, it makes it a little bit difficult when everything has to be, uh, held, um, in the public, and sometimes it may seem like, uh, you know, we're kind of talking about things, um, that you would have thought that we would have already talked about, but this is our opportunity to do that, and so we, you know, hold that very closely, and I think that oftentimes people don't understand that. So that's all my questions for now, and I, and I will have some comments later, so thank you, Madam Mayor.
First, okay, and then, um, council member Delasso, you've got your questions as well, so go ahead.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and, um, I appreciate everybody who has, uh, been here this evening and has spoken up. Um, one thing I wanted to bring up, you know, there was a couple of folks who had commented at the beginning of concern that, you know, this has taken two months to go from our July twenty-second meeting to our October one meeting here. Um, but I want to, I want to really publicly thank the city staff, because in that period of time, we're running a city, and we have an obligation to continue to run this city. Um, just some of the staff reports that the council has taken action on in that brief period of time, and I'm not going to belabor this very long, trust me, um, is coming up with, uh, an education plan for civil compliance tools regarding the county health order, and apologize for me veering away from the camera, because I'm trying to read it off my notes here. Um, every month we get a financial update based on, you know, the COVID imposition that has been put on, on us. We awarded the construction for the phase two, the bicycle and pedestrian wayfinding signage project, we awarded the downtown crosswalk safety enhancement project, and the COVID-nineteen temporary economic development response is phase two. And it's not just that the council has taken action on those issues, the staff has taken the time to potentially do things like write up specifications for specific jobs, designate various fund sources within the budget where this money could be found to obligate, should we approve things, send out proposals, rate them, and then write a staff report. So from the twenty-eighth of July, the city council meeting, we had, um, only one in August, and then two in September, so of those four meetings, we also had nearly eight-hundred pages of council agenda material, and those are pages that staff had to generate, reproduce, make public, and then certainly we had to consume and make decisions. So I understand there could be some level of frustration, why is this taking so long? But please understand the situation that the staff and the council are in, that we're running a city, this is a critical issue that we're talking about, I am not downplaying it in any way, shape, or form, I just am trying to point out, there is a lot, a lot that goes on in running a city and keeping it running pretty smoothly, in my opinion. Um, and then, uh, a question I have for the city manager, I don't know if you have, you know, all of this information in front of you, but, uh, we certainly heard in the public comments at the beginning that people were, um, not satisfied with the lack of noticing of this meeting, and so I didn't know if you had this information, you know, about addressing, when was it noticed, what was done with social media, the physical postings that we typically do, uh, the community voice, which I know has had some problem with, um, getting information from this city on, on their end with mechanical malfunctions, so, um, if, if you can address that, that would be great, and, um, I think for now, I'm going to stop with those and, um, turn it back over to the mayor, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, um, sure, council member Delasso, I could just tell you real quick, um, we, well, so we announced it at the September twenty-second meeting, um, and then we, um, published the agenda, uh, Thursday the twenty-fourth, um, and that got, it gets posted around town, the different posting boards, you know, the normal posting boards, and the agenda, um, email goes out to everybody that's on the email list that we encourage people to sign up for if they're curious about what's going on with the city. So that all happened, um, last Thursday, the twenty-fourth, and then, um, it got posted on the website, I believe Thursday or Friday, in the headlines, and then, um, uh, Facebook went out, I, I don't know the exact date, but it was shortly after, and went up on the marquee on Monday, uh, which is the normal time, the marquee changes over the text, they change the text every Monday typically. So that's, that's the, uh, that's what happened. Um, we tried to push it out specifically on the Thursday, like a whole week ahead of time, um, you know, way ahead of the normal, um, seventy-two-hour requirement for a regular meeting, this is a special meeting, of course, so the, the brown act requirement is twenty-four hours, but, um, that obviously is not adequate, and we didn't think that seventy-two hours, the normal city council, when you talk about a hundred pages of material, um, you, you guys only got seventy-two hours for that. So, um, we tried to, we tried to be even more, um, give more time than that, so we pushed it out, um, physically in the agenda a week ahead of time.
Thank you.
That's the timeline.
Okay, thank you, and, um, I'm not seeing any more hands, don't have for council members, so what I'll do is I'll back up to the attendees, uh, for public comments, um, to see what else we've got going on. Okay, so Lauren, I'll turn it over to you, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Schillman. Laura Sparks, go ahead.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, great. Um, first of all, I would just want to say thank you so much to Chief Parrish and to Damian for sharing all that information, I was really, really pleased, really, really pleased to hear we're going to be doing RIPA data collection in twenty-twenty-one, that's awesome. Um, I also, uh, really appreciate Chief Parrish posting both the two different policy manuals side by side so that we can look at the changes, I think that was really thoughtful and, um, transparent, and I also really appreciate that the officers are now going to the use-of-force simulator tr- um, training, which sounds fantastic. I have a lot of things that I want to say, and, uh, three minutes is very, very short, so I will just get as far as I can. Regarding the, so the core group has been requesting an ad hoc committee and a working group, and I know there were a lot of questions at the last city council meeting about, uh, whether we needed that, or what that would look like, or, you know, whether maybe we could decide by the end of this, um, this meeting we're having right now, on whether that was something we needed to look at or not, and, and how that would, how that would go forward. So I just wanted to give a few concrete examples of what that working group could do and what I see the scope of that being. Um, thank you for all the work you've done on the survey, and I'm really excited that that's going to go forward, uh, and Damian has been really good about reaching out to people in core to get some input on that. However, we, sort of, within our group, we're kind of playing a game of telephone, trying to get information to Damian, uh, in a timely manner, and it would just be so much easier if we had a formal way of being involved, rather than Damian having to reach out specifically to a few individuals and try to get information that way. If, if there was a, a working group to deal with all of these issues, that was comprised of people from the public and city council members, then we could have a discussion about these, the survey, and really have a little more formalized way to give that feedback. Another example is, uh, there were a few ideas presented for ways that oversight could be done and ways that it's done in different places. If we had a working group, we could discuss those ideas, we could bring in not just people from core, because I, I don't think we're a hundred percent representative of the spectrum of opinions that exist in Cattati, right? So we could bring in more people, uh, to really discuss what oversight in Cattati could look like, and we really want a formal seat at the table, not, not just to be able to, you know, email Damian, and I know he's very, very busy too, so we could take some of the load of doing research and thinking these things through, and be able to make recommendations directly to the council. I'm out of time. I'm out of time.
Adrian Lobby, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Adrian Lobby from the Red Hill apartment complex. I also want to praise you for the implementation of RIPA early on. That's really cool. Work on the poll seems to be going well. I'm waiting to see the details, but that's good. I did notice that the statewide reforms have happened and ours have not. So that's kind of ironic because usually the state is a very, even more faulty kind of bureaucracy. I want to address the notice issue. At best, we have nine days. Any public event that you expect to have a wide participation board is going to need more than nine days. I get that this is not what you do for your normal council, but this is a special meeting. Nine days is not enough. The Oversight Committee, oh, there's so much I want to say about what Chief Parrish and what Damian, Manager Obit had to say. I guess primarily I want to say that there's a Brown Act violation here. I spoke with and exchanged emails with Damian Obit about this presentation, asked for it in an advanced way, and was told this was going to be informal. Instead, we had 45 minutes of PowerPoint. This is unconscionable, that we did not have the sudden ease 24 hours in advance. And it puts us in a horrible situation where we don't have time to dig into the codes for the exact wording, we don't have time to compare and contrast, we're just sitting here listening to what is being presented with the rest of you. And this is not the way public engagement should be going. This is, I have to say, my trust is, my trust is, is not very high right now, and I'm sorry about that. You know, I have bracketed my own friends who complain that they're often put in a position where they have to be angry or bitter or just generally unpleasant. And I, I now I feel like, oh yeah, I've had that experience. Let me just say that a lot of civilian oversight, it's heavily criticized across the nation. And there are many, many people who are evaluating these things and say, no, none of that works. What is considered best practices doesn't work. We have to do it differently. In Sonoma County, we have a wonderful ability because of the Measure P, the IOLARA Reform Act. This will fix IOLARA, so it will be good and will be responsible. And I've done the research to see that Kattati can come under that umbrella, probably for a significantly reasonable amount in money. I have best practices of my own for what a civilian oversight board is supposed to be. And I will, given that I only have six more seconds, I will forward that. I also want to remember Jim Duffy's comments about NA COLA, NA SOUL, which is a federal government oversight agency group. And I hope that you will take a look at that and participate in that. There's a lot of good information there. Thank you.
Marjorie Crupshers, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you to Damian and to Chief Parrish for the time that you spent to give us information. Damian, it's clear that you are listening and hearing. My concern is, I feel as if we're being educated with the notion that this is enough. And I don't feel good about that. Ms. Harvey, in your comments, I wonder if all of you know how hard we have worked to educate ourselves about what is out there, what is considered best practices? And there is nobody on this committee who would ever serve to support our city council and our police department without knowing what the rules are and being able to follow them. The bottom line is, we are a group of actively 10 to 12 people with 20 on our roster. We have researched a lot, we have learned a lot, and we can support your efforts. We know that the work that you do demand, pulls you in many different directions. We understand that. But we are a group of people that wants to support the work that you do because ultimately it will benefit all of the people in our community. Know that, understand that, include us, please, in some way. Brown Act, fine, we will follow that. I have a question. How is the police department doing in terms of its outreach to involve the community? I went to meet with my two officers, and I was the only person there. And I asked how many other people were there in other areas? I'm curious, sincerely curious. How did that go? I think it's a great idea, but how did it go? These are the kinds of things that we also are looking at. Thank you.
Daniela Delario.
Hi, it's Daniela, Daniela, commenting here again. And I just wanted to say thank you so much for those presentations and thank you so much for all your comments. And I definitely understand these are exceptional times, we're in the midst of a pandemic. And again, we have these historic wildfires, which I don't know if we can keep calling them historic, if they happen every year. But here we are again. You know, we do have community members who are currently houseless due to the 2017 fires. And we have a lot of people who are still healing from the trauma of those fires. So this is really a time when mental health funding is paramount. We really need it more than ever. And that's where Measure O comes in. So I'm really hoping that Measure O passes and that we can expand MST and, you know, maybe even have a Kahoots-style program here in Kattati, or at least somewhere here in Sonoma County. Maybe Kattati could, you know, team up with another city or town close by, and we could really have that kind of response team. And I'm also really pleased to hear of the changes to police policy, specifically that an officer now has to intervene when they witness excessive use of force. I'm also really pleased to hear about the supplemental training, that there will be more frequent trainings and shorter trainings. I think that also as a teacher, I think more frequent and shorter is really the way to go when you're trying to teach something. The crisis intervention training, that's the CIT, also sounds very important. 32 hours seems very short. So I'm hoping that that really does happen and it happens frequently. And I think it's really important that really everyone, you know, we all have racial bias. It is so important that we have anti-bias training, not only law enforcement and teachers, elected officials, all of us. We really do need to work toward being actively anti-racist. So educating ourselves to be anti-racist, there's a lot of great books that I'm sure many of you have read or have heard of. Right now I am reading The New Jim Crow. I've read So You Want to Talk About Race, How to Be an Anti-Racist is another great book, and there's documentaries such as Thirteenth. So I'm just hoping that Measure O passes and hoping that Measure P as well passes, and that's the IOLARA, the Independent Office of Law Enforcement Review and Oversight. And hopefully that will put us in a good position in Kattati to have some more civilian oversight of our police department. And yeah, I think the implementation of RIPA and the use of force simulator training is also so very important. So again, thank you so much. And I think what I've seen from other cities is when there is a special meeting, it's really blasted all over Facebook, you know, all over social media so that the word can get out. And, you know, I agree with Marjorie that the neighborhood, meeting with a neighborhood police officer is really a great idea, but again, you just have to get that information out and, you know, again and again, so that people really, really hear it and can show up and be part, part of these meetings. So again, thank you so much.
Will Browdy, go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I just want to acknowledge and thank the Kattati Police Department and our great Rancho Adobe Fire Department for assistance in fighting the fires that are going on right now. I really appreciate them putting their lives on the line to do that. I also want to thank city council for meeting during this prime time. I didn't get a chance to comment earlier, so want to make sure to say that. Sounds like you guys are doing a lot of good work on the policy front, so I appreciate that as well. Thank you to staff for the detailed reports and Chief Parrish as well. I just want to bring up the city's decision to publicly release records in the Alcala use of force incident. I was told today, just several hours ago, that council doesn't believe these records are within the criteria of Senate Bill 1421, California Public Records Act. I just want to know the specific legal basis for this. SB 1421 covers public right to view records, including videos, reports, disciplinary records when a serious use of force occurs, especially one resulting in great bodily injury. A great bodily injury is determined case by case, but it can include concussions, broken bones, significant injury, substantial physical injury. So I just want to know why these records don't fall under the context of this law. I know there's an ongoing lawsuit against the city. That's not an excuse to comply with state law or legal responsibility. Just morally, you know, we really ask for transparency. This isn't going to go away. We'll find out the truth about this issue eventually. A legal fight on this point isn't really in the city's interest or the public interest. So I just want to say that and, you know, think maybe on the oversight piece, we may need to look into signing a joint powers agreement with IOLARA. Hopefully Measure P will pass and that body will become effective. Doesn't seem like locally that's going to be cost-effective or something that the council is too interested in pursuing. So I'd like perhaps to consider that angle as well. Thank you for your time, and I really appreciate you guys listening. Thanks.
Mel Browdy, go ahead.
Sorry, I kept on saying it was, I was muted. Yeah, I want to just thank you for the presentation, for the information, for outlining a lot of the different points that I, I know that folks were hoping to learn more about. I did want to comment that I particularly was disappointed in some comments made by council regards to us really not having the ability to understand certain things and that we better be careful for what we wish for. And I think that that's just kind of not helpful for a conversation for folks that are really hoping to make sure that we make Kattati a safe place for BIPOC people. I just think that right now, you know, it will take things that maybe are difficult and maybe take a lot of time and effort, but I think people's lives are worth it. So, you know, that just kind of disturbed me a bit, and I wanted to voice that. In terms of oversight, you know, I think there's a difference between what currently is happening and what might best practices be in terms of moving forward. We know that things that have been done have not been working. So the whole point is to reimagine how we can do things. I do realize that some things need to happen at a state and a federal level to change, but I do think that it's worth investigating how Kattati could have oversight in ways that don't currently exist. And that might include joining forces with IOLARA. So I really, I really hope that this, these efforts continue. I was really pleased to hear about RIPA. I really do appreciate Chief Parrish's efforts on working with the city on getting that implemented sooner and the different commitments that he's making. I really do also want to dispel the sense of when we talk about police oversight, when we talk about these issues, that somehow blue lives don't matter. Like, I really want to put out there, as someone who worked alongside of law enforcement for 10 years, I know the hard work that they put into doing their jobs. I know the impact emotionally, psychologically, physically that that job has. But I'm, we're not referring to that. We're referring to the oversight that's needed to keep everyone safe. And I think, you know, my profession has independent bodies that investigate, folks, folks don't go to my colleagues locally to have complaints investigated. So again, I really wanted to spell that, that for some reason, like, it means that we're, that we're against police or anything like that. This is not true. So again, I thank everybody for their presentation, and I really hope that we can continue to move forward with implementing some of these things locally. Thank you.
Laura, did you have another question?
Hello, am I unmuted?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to address a couple more things if there's time. Councilmember Delasso, I appreciated all of the information about how much the staff has been doing and how much work it's been. And I know this has been a crazy year. It's the worst year I can remember. So one of the reasons why it is taking so long, I think, is because the model the city council is using is to delegate a lot of this research to staff and then have staff produce reports at the city council meetings. And that's all extremely time-consuming. It has to be because of the way it's set up. So a different approach that could be taken is to form a working group with citizens that could participate and residents that could participate. And I don't think we're expecting you to deliver the world in a month. We just want to be included more formally. And I think that's something that could be achieved quickly. I wanted to make just a very brief suggestion about the survey, which is, I think it's important when we do the survey to include Renner Park residents and SSU students in the survey somehow, because they are interacting with our, with our city and with our police very frequently. As you know, many of us can walk 20 feet and we're in Renner Park. So I think it's just, maybe that's something you're already planning, I'm not sure, but I think it's important to include. I wanted just a totally separate comment. I'd like each of the city council members, if you haven't already, to please look into the Force Policy Institute that Chief Parrish mentioned. This is an extremely controversial training program that many cities have backed out of and stopped using because it trains officers to be overly fearful and adopts sort of a warrior mentality. The leader of the group, the executive director of the Force Science Institute, Bill Lewinsky, is an extremely controversial figure. And it did not seem from Chief Parrish's presentation that, I just felt that that information about how controversial that is wasn't really included. So I hope that you would look into that. Two more quick things. If I were planning a public event at my work at the junior college and I wanted to get a lot of participation, I would make sure to plan it at least a month in advance. And I would expect that people would have trouble getting time off of work and attending if they didn't have that much time. And the last thing I wanted to say was, with regard to what Will Browdy brought up in terms of the Christopher Alcala incident, you know, we've touted ourselves as being the first city that got body cameras, and I think that's wonderful. But when push comes to shove, and we have an incident that, that brings a lot of questions in the community, we can't we can't get access to any of the records. So what point is there in having body cameras? And how does that make us transparent if we won't release that information? So that's all I have to say.
Caitlin, go ahead.
Hi. Everybody hear me?
Great.
Yes.
All right. Um, yeah, I have a few thoughts. I just wanted to start off by saying, you know, thank you for sharing all of this information. It's really appreciated. Um, I am, like others, very excited that we are implementing, uh, the RIPA early. That's fantastic. And so thank you, Chief Parish, for sharing that information with us. And, um, I do appreciate also the effort on the upcoming community survey. Uh, what I did feel disappointed with in tonight's meeting is, uh, you know, similar to what others have expressed, just a a lack of general openness and energy for changing the way that things are done. I'm hearing a lot about what can't be done and not a lot of, you know, bit more open minded thinking about how we could shift things to include the community a bit more in the way that we're using police in Kattati and in the way that police oversight happens. Um, specifically with regard to oversight, uh, I heard a lot about, you know, what is common and what's not common. And I think what we should be looking at here is not what's common and what's not common, but what works. Because I think we've seen nationally that what's common is, you know, not preventing these extreme differences between the way that black communities and communities of colors are policed, um, you know, from the way that white communities are policed. Uh, so I don't really think that we should be basing what we do on what's already been done. I think we have an opportunity here to be a little bit more imaginative, uh, imaginative than that. Um, I also just wanted to touch briefly on mental health training. I appreciate that it's happening. Um, I myself have had to make a call to the Kattati Police, um, for a friend in a mental health situation. Um, and so I'm glad that they are getting that sort of training. That's very important. But at the same time, there's no amount of training that's going to make a police officer as good at de-escalation as somebody who's specifically trained for, uh, you know, mental health de-escalation. At the end of the day, they've got a gun. They come with associations. It's just, uh, much more difficult to be a calming force by no fault of the police officers themselves. Um, so you know, bottom line, a cahoots type program could actually keep both officers and citizens safe. Um, so just wanted to make that note that I don't think police training is a good swap out for that. Um, and ju, just to wrap up, because I only got a, you know, a few more seconds here, I just want to say that even though sometimes we may be coming here with specific concerns, we're not trying to accuse anyone on the police force of the council of doing their jobs badly. But we are looking at national patterns and reasoning that something about the jobs of public office, um, including police, you know, needs to shift to be more fair to black and citizens of color. Okay. Thank you.
Adrian Lobbie, go ahead.
I would just like to talk again about the oversight thing. I remember especially, uh, Councilmember Harvey saying, I'd like to know more about that. Uh, so the issues about who nominates and appoints is one of the critical issues that have been discussed all over the nation right now. As, uh, you know, it said, the majority now are nominated by mayors or in conjunction with the police. That means they are not mostly independent from law enforcement. We really need them to be independent. Uh, some of them lack subpoena flout power, many lack disciplinary power, and many don't exercise the powers they do have. And this is partly because, um, the funding that they have or their political, uh, connections mean that they really can't and don't exercise their power. It's a problem. So in our experience, the best practice is to have a board majority that is nominated by civic organizations, uh, a broad scope to review the complaints, independent investigatory authority, a way to ensure that discipline sticks. In other words, that the police, um, the head of police can't just ignore disciplinary recommendations from the review board. Uh, audit policies and practices. So not only the ability to investigate individual complaints, but a way to examine underlying issues and policies that are negatively impacting the community. And secure funding because again, if it's not going to be political, it has to have a funding stream that is, uh, secure. No matter what decisions it makes. It needs, uh, due process protections for police officers. So we have to keep the rights of the officers, uh, very primary and important during this process. And then public access and reporting. We all know the, the problem of closed doors, uh, bodies. So we have to have a really transparent way and quarterly reports. Now I know from the earlier, uh, presentations that some of you are saying, well, wait, that's not legal. Wait, that can't be done. Wait, wait, wait. All of this can be done and the people who are working on the Iolera question, they've been in the trenches on these issues and believe me, they have done their legal homework. There is a way to do all of these things and it is not, uh, at this point, rocket science. We could actually do it. Uh, again, I just want to ask everyone to vote yes on Measure P. So we have a really good umbrella group in the county that, that meets all of these criteria and, um, that we could potentially be part of in Kattati. Barring that, if for some reason we don't want to, or if Measure P doesn't pass and we're stuck with a very ineffective Iolero, um, probably I would personally recommend that we hire an auditor to do some of these tasks. So it's just a one person kind of thing rather than a, a large committee that needs a lot of staffing. Again, I look forward to an ad hoc meeting where we can discuss this in lots of detail. Thank you.
Mayor Skelman, let's see, end of public comments.
Okay. Thank you very much. So close public comment and, um, going back to council, see if we have any comments. And I see, um, Vice Mayor Moore, I think you can add. So go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Skelman. I, I just wanted to get a clarification from Ms. Lobby on what particular policies that we have that are undermining the community right now. If you could name a couple, I'm not quite sure that I'm familiar with any of those. Ms. Lobby, are you still there?
Well, she's, she doesn't, because.
The fact that we have not days, uh, notice is a problem. The fact that the presentation was not posted even in the 24 hour, uh, uh, required way so that we could actually respond to it in some depth and, and expertise. Uh, those are the biggest things. And I think generally the fact that, uh, you, Mr. Moore, have said, first time we came two months ago, I like all of these. I vote for all of these. And yet we're not seeing any movement, uh, at the council level. We haven't had an agenda topic that says, let's get this, this ad hoc thing going. Or do we want to do an ad hoc? If we don't, let's discuss it at depth. So that I'm looking for.
Okay. We did put the notifications out and I don't think that my, um, comments on a particular topic are undermining any community, uh, policies are undermining the community. If anything, I've been working to try to engage the community for years. But I just wanted to get a clarification on that because I wasn't really certain where, where you were going with that.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what the context was of that statement, Mr. Moore. I do feel like, uh, generally you have been in support and, uh, been good to work with. I frankly been a little bit shocked about how this all has gone. I, uh, I expected something different. And, uh, I, please don't take this personally. It's not personal comments. I'm just trying to, uh, move us forward.
Thank you. That's, that's all I have, uh, at the moment. Uh, uh, Mayor Skelman, thank you.
Okay. And Councilmember, um, if you have any comments?
Well, I feel somewhat like the tin duck in a shooting gallery in a carnival somewhere wandering out first, but I'll take that chance. Uh, so first some general thoughts. Um, well, actually before I get into that, I do want to respond to one thing in common which troubled me. For a regular meeting, the standard of notification in meetings 24 hours. For a special meeting, it's three times that. We exceeded that by a level of three. And nevertheless, we're told that's insufficient. I, I, I feel somewhat frustrated that I'm told by somebody that we should have had a month's notice. And yet these are the same people that for every meeting I've been at have been pushing us and understandably and with my support to get this out as soon as possible. Uh, I get, we are all living in a crazy world right now. There is a disease that flows in this country and it's not COVID. It's referred there very top of things. In my opinion, it has kind of orange colored hair. Uh, and I think it's making us all a little tense, a little irritable and even less able to listen to each other and expect the best in each other. And, because I know I feel it. And I think if we could all try and avoid that, it would be a good thing. Um, I do want to point out, I am open to input, direction, because much as it can be maddening and take time, I really do think it comes to a better result. But I do feel I'm not being asked to allow support. What I'm being allowed, asked to do is turn over the wheel, really, the, the, the steering wheel of the operation to a group of independent citizens. And regardless if I approve of their efforts, their intentions, have known for some of them for many years and feel close to them, that's not something where I feel comfort level seating responsibly with people that aren't hired staff of this city or elected officials. Um, I have a discomfort with doing that. Um, so some general thoughts. My question tonight really was how, how did we measure up at the beginning of this? As a city with our policies, where were we at to the needs of the time? And have we actually responded appropriately to them since then? And in the short answer is I feel generally, yes, we have. We found very early that the large portion of our existing policies all ready, already were rather modern, rather forward thinking and largely matched, uh, some of the more modern standards such as they can't wait. We're already kind of there. I know there's some discourse back and forth on that, but I think we significantly had a lot of that. More importantly to me, I found that my staff and especially our law enforcement professionals from top to bottom were open to discussion, completely amenable to discuss and change, mostly because they too are interested in seeing things changed for the better. Uh, I, I, I loved when Chief Parish said, we, we do our best, but we're not perfect. We all have to work to get better. That's true of all of us. Um, but we don't see that in other places quite so often. Now we've met most, or I believe pretty much they all with maybe one exception of the quests that I'm aware of from the public, the council. I, I have a list here. I'm going to go through it quickly so I don't bore everybody. But we're moving to early reporting, uh, and being leaders certainly for a city our size in the state. We've made for us a fairly large financial commitment to obtain actually a statistically valid survey, which I think is important. And we're open to having the community help make sure we're all satisfied with the questions that go out. So we get the best reaction we can get with that. We're also paying for Spanish translation because that's absolutely necessary to reach that core group. Excuse the pun. I didn't mean the pun there. Core for core. But it's true. It had to happen. Uh, we've had numerous policy upgrades. Now some have come to us. A lot is the expected through the state and Lexington, which is one reason I wanted to see that all settle down before we decided what we had to do. We've, were being proposed and I'm seeing general support so far for annual RIPA review and adoption of what we can make work from that in our city, regular report outs from the chief. In my main interest, the main thing that I felt I'd like to see, I was satisfied, I knew we had civilian oversight. That's what myself and my colleagues were elected to do here for all facets of this organization in the city. But I did want to see it improve and deepen. And I'm very interested in the discussion of a regular independent review process with an outside hired specialist uh, to investigate and not just in a reactive way. When something goes bad once every five years or becomes an embarrassing story potentially, or at least in some perceptions, but actually to proactively be measuring what we're doing as a city to make sure the culture at Kattati, which police department, which I believe to be much healthier than when I first came here, which is crucial. I want to see that stay. And if we can leave that as a legacy, I think that's a great thing. Uh, so I think we've met all of those standards and I'm supportive of all of that and perhaps, perhaps more. I'll begin to wrap this, say, wrap this up by saying the one thing I'm not comfortable with though, and I've been kind of convinced against through this process is opening up to civilian oversight. And I'll explain my thoughts at this point. I really believe oversight needs to be dispassionate. Uh, somebody mentioned earlier how problematic it would be. I think it was Ms. Lobby, maybe. In some areas, oversight is essentially law enforcement supporters, subordinates. I agree. That's ridiculous. It just doesn't work. But I have great concerns for the other side of the aisle to have any group that has potentially a negative bias implicit to some degree, which I perceive a little bit. I will share that I believe sometimes there's a need for that. Uh, I'm at least up to this point, I've been interested in voting yes on P personally. And that's because I believe from what I've seen at the sheriff's office, there are enough issues with having outside oversight, even though I know it will be adversarial, even though I know it will create a lot of problems. I think that might act as a balance. However, I'm just going to add by saying I don't see that here in Kattati. I have not seen that yet at all. And I've been convinced through numerous discussions and hours of conversations on the phone with many of you and email exchanges that we might only get the bad side of that here, having an adversarial relationship. Uh, where I'm at right now is I would like to see us, at least for a trial period, perhaps a year, move forward with the, all the recommendations in the enhanced oversight for the council and also wait to see exactly what we get back from our survey. And then perhaps revisit down the line. Uh, I believe personally that will work and I think that solves all the needs. I'm comfortable with that. I recognize not all my friends might agree with that. But I wanted to take the time to explain my thinking. So I, I appreciate everybody's been involved with this and has taken the time to have the conversations. I've enjoyed them and I hope, uh, we have more of them. So, thank you, Madam Mayor, for the time.
Certainly. Um, Councilmember Hart, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, first off, I think that, um, my last comment was maybe taken out of little context. Um, what I was trying to express was that the group that's there that's been doing a lot of this um, has been free to share information and send emails and share articles and, you know, exchange phone calls and, and different things with one another. Those are great things and you guys have been able to come up with great ideas and, you know, Adrian, you know, you, you pointed out, you know, a, a lot, a lot of things as has Marjorie and, and, and others. I think that it is sometimes frustrating because we don't get the benefit of having that ability, um, to do that. Our ability is as you see right now in sharing in a public meeting. So everything that we do has to be done in the public. So that, that is what I was speaking to. The format of your meetings are allowed. So us wanting to put that kind of structure on that, I, I think that I wouldn't want to see that because I think that it tops down your creative creativity and ability to share. So first I wanted to get that out there. So I didn't mean, um, uh, uh, for it to come out the way it did. Apparently it upset a couple of people. Didn't mean to do that. I'm terribly sorry. Um, as far as these meetings go and some of the things, uh, these are tough times. We're dealing with lots of stuff. It's, you know, smoky out, there's fires, you know, everybody's been trying to make sure that the businesses stay in business. This is not a great format for us to have, uh, communities get together and talk with one another. It just isn't. We're all doing the best that we can, but it's not a great format. When I think of when we went through like the general plan and we had all the discussions with the community and lots of different people attended different points in time when they could. You know, we sat at tables and we got post-its and we discussed different things. That's, I think, more conducive to this and, and I think that's what's frustrating, I think. think, um, for everyone and I hear it in some of the comments that, you know, people just want to be at, at the table and we're sitting in a structure right now that, that um, isn't conducive to that. And I, I, I'm sorry and we are trying to do um the best we can with, with what we have right now. Um, I feel like we really do need this survey. Um, I, to move forward on what some of the issues are, I hear everyone about the um nationwide issues and I have no doubt that those don't exist in lots of places. But my, my interest is what is happening in our small community of Khatari? What are our issues? I want to hear what those specific issues are from those folks. Then I think with knowing what those issues are from the survey, we can look at those specific issues to our community and determine what we need to do. Do we need to change policy? Do we need more training? Is it something else that we need to do uh in order to make that better? Do we need to have more of the policing uh community meetings? Um, the comment was made, I think it was by Marjorie, that, you know, not very many people attend. That has been um an issue, I've attended a couple of them. And it's not clear all the time why people don't attend different things. My thought is that possibly when we do our more general survey next year, that might be a good question to put on the survey about participation, you know, what, what would um help with participation um from folks? Because we've tried Nextdoor, we've tried Facebook, we've tried the, the uh marquee, we've tried the water bills, we've tried, you know, pushing things out, having people sign up. People's lives are kind of busy and people attend what they want to attend. We mentioned this at, at, at last time's council meeting and I specifically asked because I wanted to be sure that people um got as much notice as they could possibly get. Um, but it, it makes it difficult when I hear, well, maybe we should put it a month out. Uh, what comes to my mind is if rather than having this tonight, if we would have waited until November, would that have been okay or would we have again been told, why did you wait so long? So it's one of those balancing things to get back to people. Um, I really think that it's important for us to implement some of these things like the annual review and encourage people to attend. I mean, we can put that out, maybe what we need to do is um have a set month that we do it in so that people can depend upon it. Um, maybe that's a way to do it, um, I don't know. Um, and the noticing is, I know frustrating um to some folks, but I'm not going to go into that because other people have already mentioned that. I feel like we've done a lot of the things that have been asked and um I hope we can do more, but I feel like we really need the survey results to really move forward on, on some of the Khatari specific things. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, and um, Councilmember Delosso, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Skellman. Um, just a couple of very brief comments, uh, on some of my colleagues' comments. So um, may I ask, I don't know, it's a problem that there's no pill to take to get rid of unfortunately. So we had um 18 attendees tonight, I know people were asking, and at our previous meeting we had 22. So it's a pretty close number as far as getting the noticing out and, and people that attended. Um, I kind of, um, I don't want to sound Pollyannaish, but, but I do want to make a point that we are clearly, clearly moving forward. And we're really doing that, not so much at some level from council guidance, but really our city manager and our chief of police have taken upon themselves to look at all of these different uh criteria that are out there, um, knowing that there is no police department, there's no city council, there's no city hall staff that is perfect. Um, and what we strive to do is if there are missteps, let's correct them. And if we can try to avoid missteps in the future, let's put the right policies in place. Are we done updating the Khatari Police Department policies? Probably not. Things will change in the future as well. But I think where we were just a couple of months ago, I think it's important that we are definitely all collectively from all the comments, public comments, council comments, staff, uh, moving forward, I believe we're moving in the right direction. There are still one or two unsettled items, uh, but I think, I think there'll be some clearer direction on those in the next month or two. That's just kind of, I'm not putting a timeline on it, but I'm just thinking that, you know, there's going to be um some more discussion on these items. So again, I want to just thank everybody from staff to the participants that we've had uh in these meetings and in any side meetings. And if there's members of CORE that want to have communication with me, I know somebody had said, well, none of the council members reached out to us, but communication's two ways, nobody's reached out to me. And if somebody wants to reach out to me like Marjorie Crump Shears did a couple of months back, even longer than that, um, I met with her and Adrian and we had a great discussion. So let's just keep in mind that we're, we're taking, we're all taking positive steps here, but we're not done. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, and um, obviously this isn't a formal city council meeting, so we're not going to be voting on anything tonight, but what I wanted to do is ask Damian to um go back over recommendations, I think if you counsel, I'm so very interested, they're interesting. Doing that, I mean, our goal um that we set for ourselves was to um, you know, have the survey results early next year, be able to have a meeting where we can, Damian can summarize and talk about what the survey results show and what that might indicate. Um, then also to have our first annual report out uh from Chief Parrish within the first quarter of 2021. So those are the, the goals that we kind of set for ourselves, um, so we can improve transparency and uh move things along. So I'm going to ask Damian if you can just recap the recommendations, um, and then I will commit to public comment one last time and then bring it back to council for the final comments.
Um, sure, thank you, Mayor. Um, so just to, just to uh recap the next steps, um, so it's going to be, it's going to be a busy end of the year, um, just on the staffing, on the staff side. So um, as you guys know, we're going to be pushing um to implement RIPA early, so that's going to be, you know, between now and the end of the calendar year, we're busy with that, we're going to be busy um finalizing the community survey, um, design and getting that out and hopefully getting results back. Um, the police are busy doing additional supplemental training, so that's, you know, there's still a lot of activity on that front. Um, you know, uh, the chief and I will be working on uh trying to put together a sort of an annual public report um on sort of the year, on the year and police activities. And so that's going to be a substantial work effort too, because it hasn't been done yet here, so we got to put all that together and kind of come up with a system and, and then have a public discussion about it, about um the information that, you know, we put forward and if there's other things that the council or the community wants to see in those reports. Um, so that's going to take um a bit of time, so hopefully, as you mentioned, Mayor, in the, in the first quarter of next year, we'll be kind of done with that process and happy with kind of what that report looks like at least now and then, you know, a year from now, then we'll have RIPA data and that'll get folded into that report as well. Um, so there's a lot, um, you know, based on the discussion tonight and discussion from the prior meeting, there's just a lot to do um at a staff level to kind of get all this stuff ready to go and um have it essentially um implemented, you know, by the end of the year or shortly after, in the case of the report, um, the annual report. Um, and um, you know, we'll also uh continue to um, you know, we'll bring back, we will bring back the council if, um, if there's additional funding needed for the survey, we'll obviously bring that back. Um, I don't know where we are with that yet, but um hopefully we'll know soon. As we get into um looking at, uh, as we get into looking at the uh, you know, the review of um, uh, kind of the spot, the spot checking of compliance review, we'll have some more information on that that we can bring back, kind of what that would look like exactly and what the costs would be. And so that'll be another, another budget discussion probably as we get towards the end of the fiscal year. Um, and then I will say, just in general, there's a couple, um, there's a couple of things that were brought up just in community comment that I think um could be helpful and not to use a bad police pun here, but the chief will probably taze me for this. But um, I will uh, I, I think, I think there's a lot of, I think there's a lot of opportunity to um, uh, and it went in, in all fairness, I think the chief would agree with me that, you know, some things, he's always looking for new ways to engage um with the community to get more public input and um I heard some mention about neighborhood meetings and, you know, are there ways to encourage more participation and get more meaningful feedback just by getting more people there? I think um we're certainly just meeting directly with myself or the chief, would be open to ideas or ways to kind of um get more people to those meetings, to really get um just more people in the room, so to speak, and get more meaningful feedback. And um, and obviously I'm working, you know, I'm working with the community groups on um, in the community on the survey itself. And um, and you know, lastly, once, you know, once, you know, as we kind of get into this, the annual reporting and we start, you know, we get the survey data back and we get the, you know, the RIPA data back, you know, it might start showing things that would speak to, well, maybe we should get more training in this area or maybe we should get more training in, you know, some other area. And um, you know, I, I definitely think that we're open to ideas if there's, you know, training out there that would meet some of those needs as we, you know, maybe have those discussions in the future. So it's a, you know, it's a, it's an ongoing process. And that, and that's kind of what, you know, I think what we're looking at at a staff level, so there will be more items coming back to council as we sort of get through these um tasks. And um, I guess I'll just leave it at that unless you guys have any questions.
Mayor, it's the chief and I wanted to also comment on the community meeting.
Yeah, go ahead, thank you.
Um, well, so first of all, uh, for Marjorie Crump Shears, uh, thank you for attending and I want to share with you um that the officers, they really enjoyed um talking to you. And our officers do want to talk to citizens and as uh Councilman, Councilmember Harvey uh stated that we really push the information out. Um, but again, the officers, they do want to engage with the community. But one of my thoughts were um HOAs, because as you know, me and the city manager met with majority of the HOAs uh in our city recently, prior to COVID. Um, but I think HOAs may be a good avenue. Um, so I think HOAs should reach out to their area officers and I could talk to the officers about reaching out to the HOAs. Um, I don't think Zoom's the best way to do it, but we could do that. And then uh, once we get through this pandemic, uh, hopefully officers could be in living rooms and HOA um facilities, engaging with the community. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I would just certainly agree that I think there's opportunities there for sure. There's, you know, that, um, there's probably lots of good connections and people that they could um help us connect with in these meetings so that we get more people there.
Okay, and so it looks like we've got a couple hands up for the um councilmembers. So um, let's just try to focus on the next steps and proposed recommendations and then um I will open it up for public comments and then we'll be back for final comments from council. So, uh, Vice Mayor Moore, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Skellman. Um, I had wanted to speak, but I didn't, wasn't sure I could formulate my thought appropriately. Um, it's an emotional issue. It wasn't an issue we didn't hear uh of until April. And then all of a sudden in April, we have a, a body of citizens that are interested in us looking at racism in the city and what we can do and to make sure that we don't have the racism in the city. So with that in mind, I think that the um recommendations that we have or the suggestions that we're doing, the things that we're implementing, we're moving in the right direction. I was um, I'm still interested in a particular commission, if it's an appropriate commission. Um, as, as all of the participants and the attendees have seen, um, it's not as easy as saying, hey, let's just start an ad hoc committee, it's much more complicated than that. Um, I did not get an invitation to be a member of CORE. Um, I don't know why. Um, I don't know if anyone on the police department got an invitation to be a member of CORE. But I would think that as we move forward and we delve into this even further, implement some of the best practices, make the changes that are appropriate to make so that we don't get into um sticky situations, so to speak, or that we're not displaying racist behavior, uh, whether it's intentional or not. Um, I think that uh I would be more than willing to, to uh participate in CORE and uh share information as appropriate and/or relay information back. Um, we still have every single council meeting going forward that information can be uh shared with. Um, and, and I think that with that in mind, um, that there's nothing that's precluding us to continue working on this, um, and then see what we can come, come up with that is going to be ultimately the best for all concerned. So, um, thank you, Mayor Skellman.
Okay, thank you, and um, Councilmember Harvey, go ahead.
I just had a quick thought based upon um what the chief was saying. I know that they've been out to the HOAs and, and held the meetings at the police station, but another thought might be is to have an opportunity for people to maybe hold, hold, when the pandemic's over, mind you, um, to hold house parties where people can invite people from their neighborhood to their house, you know, not too dissimilar to when you used to have the neighborhood watch program, but something akin to that, that might be another way, you know, for people to get out to the neighborhoods. Just a thought, just wanted to throw that in.
Okay, thank you. So I think we'll um open it back up to public comments on the ideas, recommendations for next steps. Um, and then, like I said, we'll bring it back to council for final comments. So thank you guys all for attending and I'll turn it over to Lauren checking with our public. Thank you, Mayor Skellman. Laura Sparks, go ahead.
Hi, I wanted to address the um comments about my 30 days remark. First of all, I had about six or seven things I wanted to say in three minutes, so it just came out quickly because I was trying to get lots of things in, so I apologize if it came off the wrong way to you. Um, here is my thinking behind the month, is that a lot of people have um their work schedules where they get scheduled for two weeks at a time. And uh often those schedules are made a week or two in advance. So if you're a working person who works nights and you really want to get off a Thursday night, it, it might take at least a month in order for that to be possible. I didn't mean that as a criticism against the city council, so I was just saying in the future, you know, one thing you might consider is even if you're not sure exactly what the agenda's going to be, you could send out sort of like a save the date, just sort of decide on the, the date earlier. Um, I know you're all doing your best, so thank you for that. Um, there was one other comment I wanted to address, which is uh that Councilmember Landman thought that he was um being asked to turn over the steering wheel to our group. And I just really don't agree that that's what we're asking for. Um, I don't feel that wanting to have an ad hoc committee that could make a recommendation to the city council is turning over the steering wheel, it would still only be a recommendation. So that's all I wanted to say and I, I feel badly that this seems to have gotten so heated when we're all trying to work towards improving our city together and I hope we can just come together. Thank you.
Mayor Twysman, go ahead.
The link to join CORE is
The link to join CORE is HTTPS colon slash slash BIT dot L Y slash CORE JOIN. And if I could share that, I would. If I could put it in the chat, I would. But hopefully it'll be in the minutes. John, I've been looking for your email address so I could send you the link this whole time, since you mentioned that you hadn't gotten an invitation. I've been looking for your email address all over the Cattati website. So I'm going to keep looking for it. And when I find it, I will copy and paste this link. But you are welcome. As Laura just said, this is about working together. There is no anti-racist path forward that is not together. That it doesn't work. We have to do this together. Please join CORE. BITLY slash CORE JOIN. That's how you join.
My email is jmore@catatacyoung.org.
It's on its way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Adrian Lobbie, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Our meetings are basically, our group is basically open and you're all invited. I think we didn't want to hinge on your time and take assumptions. So we didn't go after you to join the organization. You know, whoever said this all sort of happened in April, well, George Floyd was killed in May. And a lot of us white folks all across the country said, wait a minute, you know, wait a minute, wait a minute. And as we've seen, more and more people being killed, more and more people being injured, weird law enforcement stuff, weird judicial stuff, we're, we're way interested now. And we really want to make sure it doesn't happen here. I want to address two, Mark's comment about taking over the wheel. And, you know, think about your planning commission, think about your used to be design review committee. You've often set aside a group of people to say, look, become subject matter experts, delve into it. You know, in those cases, you appointed people. In this case, we're asking some of you to join us. So we're really not talking about going off on our own. And, you know, I want to leave this on an upbeat note, but it's, it's really hard. I feel a lot of condescension here that we don't really know the rules. We don't know how hard it is. We don't, we're not going to be careful enough. It's just not true. It's just not true. We have a group of citizens here, actually one of the best teams I've ever worked with in terms of knowledge and skills and willingness to get into the details and have an open mind. It may seem because we have, we come to it with a desire to protect black and brown people, that we're prejudiced against the police. I think you've heard a lot of people tonight say, this is not where we're at. This is not where we're at. We're not prejudiced against the city. We're not prejudiced against the police. But we want to have some open deliberations and ongoing work on this issue so we can really feel safe. And I'm not, I'm not feeling it yet. And I hope none of the rest of you are either, because I just think we're, we're still at the tip of the iceberg. But I do appreciate your time tonight, and I hope we can go forward together.
Daniela Delorio.
Hi, it's Daniela again. And thank you again so much. Thank you for all of your comments. And yeah, I did just want to echo what many other CORE members have said. We definitely don't want the steering wheel. You know, you are the elected officials. And we just really want to work with you. We want to, you know, continue to attend these meetings and to, you know, we do meet on our own. And we talk a lot about different anti-racist policies. We talk a lot about trying to make Cattati a better place. And we don't think in any way, shape or form that Cattati is behind, you know, in comparison to other cities in the area. You know, Cattati is not doing worse than Santa Rosa, but we want to just do better. You know, I think Cattati really can be a leader and really has been a leader in the past, especially, you know, I know that Cattati had their officers wearing body cams before other cities in Sonoma County. So I want us to continue to be a leader. And that's why we're pushing. We're not pushing because we think you're all doing a horrible job or anything like that. We're pushing because we just want to do better. And not better just in comparison, we want to do better than everyone else. You know, we, we want to be leaders here. So that's really where a lot of us, I think, are coming from. What else was I going to say? So I live in Frog Song, which is an intentional co-hosting community. We do have monthly meetings and we would love for any of you to come. We are currently meeting over Zoom. And, and yeah, I just would like to invite any of you to come, the police chief, or any of our neighborhood officers. We would love to have you. And I could get that information out. Mark Landman and I have exchanged some emails. So I could maybe send you an email, Mark, and then get that information out to you, just to invite you. And of course, yeah, our group is open to any one of you who has the time to spare. I know so many of you are busy. But if you're interested, please come. And again, thank you so much for listening to us. And I know we all really appreciate it. So thank you.
Marjorie Crump Shears, go ahead.
Thank you. Am I the last hand up? I hope. Is there another?
There is another hand up.
Oh, let me wait. Let's go to that person.
Will Prady, please go ahead.
Sorry, I'm muted. I just want to say again, thanks for the time. I know it's getting late. I just want to respond to the comment that, you know, it's really all kicked off in April or May, whichever. You know, how can we respond to incidents involving our police department in our community that are serious uses of force if we don't know about them? It's proving really difficult to find information about this incident that occurred in July 2019. You know, we just really want to find out what's going on. We want statistics. The annual report is a great idea. But if we go to the Department of Justice website and we look up uses of force by Cattati PD, we're just going to see a number. We're not going to see any detail on that. So we just want to know about what's going on in our community. I think it's in the public interest. I think it's justified. And my personal belief is our legal right to know. I just don't think that the police are doing a great job of, you know, regulating themselves. And the city government is not really aiding, you know, the community in finding out what's going on about these incidents either. So I think just we need civilian oversight of some kind that's independent. I know Damian's a member of the POA. And, you know, it's kind of a conflict of interest to have a police supporter determining the policies and what everything's okay. And, you know, just solely making these reports. I do appreciate the work, but, you know, I just hope you take seriously that the community is just asking to know what's going on in our city. And we need transparency. Thank you.
Marjorie Crump Shears, go ahead.
Thank you. I want to also extend an invitation to Chief Parish or any one of your officers to join CORE. We are open, and it's a very easy process, and we would love to have you. I want to read a poem. It's one of my favorites. It's by Langston Hughes. And I'm going to read it because I'm pretty sure, without knowing who else is on this, that I am definitely the oldest person here. This is called Mother to Son. Well, son, I'll tell you, life for me ain't been no crystal stair. It's had tacks in it and splinters and boards torn up in places with no carpet on the floor. There. But all the time, I spent on climbing on and reaching landings and turning corners and sometimes going in the dark where there ain't no light. So boy, don't you turn back. Don't you set down on the steps 'cause you find it's kind of hard. Don't you fall now. For eyes are still going, honey. Eyes are still climbing. And life for me ain't been no crystal stair. And I feel that for me, for you, and for everybody on this webinar. Thank you.
Mayor Scoville, at the end of public comment.
Okay, yes, thank you very much, Marjorie, for your comments. And just to, to clarify something, in one of the other constraints that we have as council members, we even have to be careful when we go to, before we were allowed to go to social events, we had to be careful if there were more than two of us attending, we can't sit together. Otherwise, it gives the appearance something might be talking about, something happened to, something we may be voting on. So anyway, I very much appreciate all the invitations. But we will have to sort of limit, you know, Vice Mayor Moore is going to be a member. That means that only one other of us could even join. So anyway, just wanted to let you know that, that it's not, it would not be, you know, four of us turning away and saying, no, we, we're not going to do it, or we're not interested. It just may be that we're genuinely constrained. So I just wanted to let everybody know that. So thank you. I'll bring it back to council just one last time, see if there's any follow up comments. We've really covered a lot. I really appreciate all of the public comments and everybody keeping things very civil. I really do appreciate the, the back and forth nature of a more somewhat less formal meeting, you know, it's still on Zoom. And then when we, if council members are going to comment, or at least the last thing I want to do is just sort of a thumbs up about the recommendations that staff has made. Obviously, we want the survey results. Obviously, we want, you know, to have the annual report that was discussed. I think we're all in favor of those, but we just want to do sort of a general thumbs up at the end of the meeting. So just so that you all know where I'm going with this. All right, Councilmember Landman, you've got your hand up. Go ahead.
First of all, that was the first thing I had on my list, Madam Mayor. Thumbs up for all the recommendations for improvement that staff put forth. I think they're good, very pleased. Couple of quick comments. I like the idea of doing a save the date. I think, I recognize that for some, the need for earlier scheduling might be beneficial. I recognize also, we're subject to the same constraints that makes that difficult. But where we can, I like the idea of at least putting a tentative date out and saying, save this date, even if we don't have an agenda. Good idea. That works for me. As far as being invited to Frog Song, done there a lot of times, always happy to do that. I wasn't sure if the community dinners were still going. Obviously, they have to be virtual community dinners, I guess. But I appreciate the invite. And one, before I, my last comment, I wanted to make one aside. I mentioned earlier about the orange sickness that's going through this country and how we're all suffering from it. And I hope you'll all understand. I think I mentioned, that includes me. So I hope you'll give me some forbearance and understanding with that, too, because it is a difficult time for all of us. I think we do the best we can, and that's all we can do. And sometimes, we don't always make. But lastly, I wanted to thank Marjorie for what a very nice way to end a meeting. Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Harvey, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of things. Maybe this is where we're supposed to be, because this is a difficult subject. I feel like we're making progress. But apparently, we're not making progress when I hear things like there's no trust and that we're hiding things. So maybe that's where we're supposed to be in this process. I thought we were, you know, moving forward, but maybe, you know, maybe that's just where we're at in there. One of the other things that I, that did come to mind for me is, at one point, we had the CEC, the Community Environment Commission. And we kind of put that aside because for one thing, they didn't have a purpose. And for the second thing, we couldn't really get anyone to join. And when we did have someone join, then there might be one person. And, and it's difficult to have just a meeting with yourself. So maybe there'll be an opportunity here for that. But I appreciate everyone's comments. Although this hasn't been necessarily the most pleasant meeting that I think everyone has been to, I feel like these are the discussions that we need to, need to have. And I feel like we are making steps. Maybe they're not leaps, like there is an expectation for it. But I do feel like we are listening. We, we are going to move forward with the survey. You know, we're being as transparent as we can with, you know, a police report. We're going to do the RIPA things. I mean, so I feel like we're making steps. But I think the survey will help us. I think it'll help us as a community. And I think it will help give us direction to move forward. I appreciate all the work that staff put into this. I appreciate all the things that Chief Parish has done to kind of keep us moving. A lot of people have lots of things on their plates. And so, you know, we, we're in the midst of a pandemic and the fires and all of that. And I know people have been doing a lot of things. So I appreciate the community attending, even though they're busy. And I appreciate staff's work for this. So thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Moore, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Scoville. A couple of things. I just want to express that as much as we may not like it, everything is political. We have to consider what will happen if Measure O doesn't pass? What happens if Measure P doesn't pass? What happens if Measure S doesn't pass? If we don't have Measure S passing, we may not have a police department. And this may, this whole topic would be a moot point. So in your quest to make the city better and to make this a greater community, keep those in mind and tell people, those things are important measures, and we need to get those out there and supported and passed. And I am in support of the recommendations on board. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Harvey, I see your hand went back.
I'm sorry. So just one more thing. You know, it's important that the CORE group help us with letting people know that the survey is, will be coming and that they please ask folks to participate. Because I know that sometimes when survey groups reach out to people, they don't necessarily want to participate. So we could use a hand. And if someone gets a call on this, or however it is that they're going to get it, that they please help us ask people to please participate.
Yeah, okay. And if we can do to get the word out, it's very much appreciated. So I just want to, again, thank everybody who attended tonight. I know we've all got busy schedules. So I really appreciate you taking time out, staff time, everybody wanting to bring this together. The chief coming to this meeting and letting us know what's going on. And I really appreciate you seeing all of the additional steps that taken by the police department already, above and beyond what was initially required. So I can just do a quick thumbs up poll from council members, I think I've heard from Vice Mayor Moore and from Councilmember Landman. So if I can just get sort of a thumbs up virtually. Okay. So I see Susan, Mark. Now I have to scroll down and see everybody. Okay, great. So Damian, do you feel like you've got some good direction? Oh, Councilmember Blossom, you've got your hand up. Is that for a thumbs up or was that a comment?
No, Madam Mayor, I apologize. But twice in the last five minutes, it's booted me out. And you started to say or ask a question, but not only you froze, everybody else froze. And I thought I was in the Twilight Zone for just a minute there. But I'm back. Did you have a question? I'm sorry.
Not a problem. I was getting a virtual thumbs up if you were supportive of the recommendations that Damian made as far as the survey. that Damian had made as far as the survey and the annual reports on the, uh, uh, what was the other one? Having to?
Yeah, no, absolutely. The staff recommendations, yeah, I mean, with the staff recommendations, I had commented earlier that, you know, I'm in favor of moving forward on all of those. So, sorry about the glitch.
That's okay. There's occasionally a glitch in the matrix. Um, so, thank you, everybody, for your time tonight. We've got some good direction for, for, uh, city manager going forward, um, these projects. And again, once we get survey information back, and the more information we have, the more we can justify going forward with any additional steps that may cost money, then we have to then justify going into the budget to maybe create a position for having an independent investigator to, uh, look, review and look at policies and things like that. So, um, the more information we have, the better, so we know that we can move forward and justify any, um, additional cuts on the budget. And again, too, we need to know Measure S passes, all of these other measures pass. So, um, a lot of us sort of await and see. So not telling you how to vote, just asking everybody, please just vote so that we can then complain about the results. No, just kidding. Anyway, thank you guys so much. Have a wonderful week. Please, everybody stay safe. Social distance, wear your mask, check the air quality before you go outside. And, uh, hopefully you will come back to blue skies and be able to appreciate it every moment. So have a good evening, everybody. Thank you again.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.